Okay, so we're live. So, good evening, everybody. Good evening, councillors, good evening, members of the public. I'm councillor David Stephens, I'm mayor of Reading and I'll be chairing the council this evening. Firstly, I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the council, which is now being held as an online meeting, I think this is our third, with social distancing rules in place, councillors are meeting tonight on this video conferencing platform instead of a meeting in person at the civic offices. The third meeting of the council since the Coronavirus and Virus Act 2020. It's allowed local authority committees to be conducted online, attended remotely by members and officers. I'll now take a bit of time just to go through the procedures to be followed. I think most of us are now familiar with it, obviously members of the public might not be. Although meetings being held online, the public and press can still see and hear the meeting as if they were attending in the civic offices. The agenda papers have been published on the council's website and the Modern Government app. These papers have been considered by members. As usual, if you want to speak in line for this evening and have not informed me in advance, please could you indicate in the chat section if you wish to do so. Officers and I will be monitoring the chat section and you'll be called to speak, all being well, in the order in which you indicate. I'll try, I'm obviously expecting quite a number of people to speak this evening, so I'll do my best to sort of get us in order, but be assured you will be called. Could I also ask you just please limit your use of the chat? Because basically, we're going to try and use it to manage the business of the meeting's agenda. It makes it easier for us to ask to work out who wants to speak and what they want to say. Okay, I remind everybody also, it's our budget meeting tonight, so I'm required to hold a recorded vote on the main motion of the night on approving the authority's budget and level of council tax to be levied for each financial year in accordance with the local authorities' standing orders, England Amendment Regulations 2014. In relation to other business before us this evening, and similar to our previous occasions, I'll try and seek general assent discerning that from speakers in order to do a lengthy roll call for each of the motions or amendments. In these circumstances however, in the event that there are differing voting intentions of different groups, I will allow time for individual councillors to ask for their vote to be recorded or state how they would have voted if they so wish. And naturally, the proposal does not affect the right of any three councillors to demand that a vote be recorded in accordance with Council Procedures Rule 24 Br 1. In this instance, a full roll call of councillors will be necessary. So I'll shortly ask members to introduce themselves, the benefits of the public, and also to ensure that all in attendance are as expected. And they can also, they can hear us and we can hear them. Could I ask members and officers to put their microphones on mute when you're not speaking? And when called to speak, you should unmute your microphone and pause around three seconds to allow for the slight time delay. So can I ask you also just to sort of anticipate your name in the roll call and not have to wait for three seconds every time? You should also remember to put your camera on shortly before being called to speak, otherwise you will not be visible on screen as you start your contribution. As ever, we'll be at the mercy of individuals' broadband services, but if possible, we'll keep going. As long as we have 12 members in the meeting, we are corret. So with that, I'll now do a roll call. As I say, I'm the mayor, I start and I'll go through alphabetically, asking each of you please just to confirm your presence, we can hear you, starting with councillor David Absalom.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor David Absalom, Redlands Ward.
Good evening, councillor Deb Zabslum.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Deb Zabslum, present.
Councillor Ayub.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Mohamed Ayew for Abbey Ward.
Good evening, councillor Bolton.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Isabel Bolton from Maple Durham Ward.
Councillor Bonnet Ward.
Evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Delbonnet Ward, Cabbasham Ward councillor and lead member for neighbourhoods and communities.
Leader of the council, councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, councillor Jason Brock, leader of the council, councillor for Southcote Ward.
Councillor Carnell.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, thank you very much, councillor Paul Carnell, Thames Ward councillor.
Councillor Challenger.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Challenger, Catesgrove Ward.
You're quite faint councillor Challenger, so if you're speaking later, we may have to call you to sort of turn yourself up a bit. Councillor Davis.
Present.
Councillor Davine.
Ricky Davine, Tyreke Councillor.
Councillor Eden.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Rachel Eden, Whitley Ward and deputy mayor.
Yes, councillor Edwards.
Oh, good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Deb Edwards, Southcote Ward.
Councillor Emerson.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Ellie Emerson, Minster Ward and lead member for corporate and consumer services.
Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, councillor John Ennis, Southcote Ward and lead councillor housing.
And for those of you who've just arrived, councillor Ennis would like to make it known that he has arrived at least 10 minutes ago. Councillor Gittings.
Yeah, good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Paul Gittings, Minster Ward councillor and Chair of the Strategic Environment Planning and Transport Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Grasshoff.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Claire Grasshoff from Peppard Ward.
I don't believe we've got councillor Hacker with us, just to confirm that. No. Councillor Hoskin.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Graham Hoskin, Lead Councillor Health, Wellbeing and Sport and councillor for Northcote Ward.
Councillor James.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Sophia James, Catesgrove Ward.
Councillor Jones.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Tony Jones, councillor for Redlands Ward and lead member for adult social care.
Councillor Khan. Councillor Khan. So we'll come back to councillor Khan. Councillor Ling.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor for Whitley Ward.
Thank you. Who was that speaking? I thought I got councillor Khan there. Okay. Councillor Lovelock. Okay, I'll come back to councillor Lovelock. Councillor Mangini, I think, is also not present this evening. So councillor Hacker and councillor Mangini clearly paired themselves this evening. Councillor Mascol.
Present, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McEwen. Councillor McEwen. Yep, can see you.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Ruth McEwen and I'm Chair of Aids Committee from Churchward.
We're getting there. Councillor McGonigal.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Brendan McGonigal for Parkward.
Councillor McKenna.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor McKenna from Whitley Ward.
Distinctively, good evening. Councillor O'Connell. Councillor O'Connell. Can't see you at the bottom. Okay. Councillor Page.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Tony Page, Deputy Leader of the council and Lead Member for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport.
Councillor Page. Councillor Pearce.
Evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Ashley Pearce from Churchward and the Lead Councillor for Education.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, good evening, everyone, I'm councillor Simon Robinson representing Peppard Ward.
Councillor Rowland.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Karen Rowland, Abbey Ward councillor and Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation.
Thank you. Councillor Wren.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Jenny Wren for Kentwood Ward.
Councillor Diapal Singh.
Good evening, Mayor, councillor Kentwood Ward.
Councillor Raj Singh.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Raj Singh from Kentwood Ward.
Councillor Skeets. Councillor Skeets.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor, councillor Jeanette Skeets, Thames Ward councillor and Leader of the Conservative Group.
Thank you. Councillor Sukhali.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor, I'm Shokala for Cabbasham and Vice Chair Planning Applications Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Stamford Beale.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Stamford Beale, Peppard Ward.
Councillor Terry.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Liz Terry for Minster Ward and Lead Member for Children's Services.
Thank you. Councillor White.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, Rob White, Parkward councillor and Leader of the Green Group of Councillors.
Thank you. Councillor Whitam.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, councillor Jamie Whitam, councillor for Redlands Ward.
Councillor Josh Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, councillor Josh Williams of Parkward.
Councillor Rose Williams.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Rose Williams from Catesgrove Ward.
Thank you, councillor Williams. And lastly, councillor Woodward.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, councillor Paul Woodward from Churchward.
Thank you, councillor Woodward. So we have three who we thought were going to be with us and we didn't hear. Let's just try once again. So councillor Khan.
Yeah, sorry, apologies, Mr Mayor, that gold Khan's just called me and said he's struggling to get in.
Okay, thanks for that, councillor Ennis. Councillor Lovelock. Councillor Lovelock, I can't see any indication. And councillor O'Connell. Councillor O'Connell. Okay, so we've got three that obviously we're hoping will join us and hopefully they might be able to join before we get too far into the meeting. So, thank you councillors, also like to introduce you to the officers who are in attendance tonight so that you'll know who they are and what their role is. I think we just see their pictures. So we have Mr Peter Sloman, who's the council's chief executive, Mr Mike Graham, who's the council's monitoring officer, and Mr Michael Popham, who is the committee services, sorry, from the committee services section, and he'll be taking the minutes for this evening. Item two then are declarations of interest. I've not been notified of any declarations of interest. I now pause for a moment and allow any councillor to state if they have any interest they wish to declare and the nature of those interests. Okay, so no declarations of interest. Item three, minutes of the preceding previous meeting. I've looked through them, they appear to me to be a true record. And so could I please ask all councillors to agree the minutes of the previous meeting?
Agreed.
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 Thank you, everybody. Item four. Item four petitions. I have not received any petitions for this evening's meeting, so we'll go on to questions. So item five, questions from members of the public. We've received six questions this evening's meetings from members of the public. So first of all, welcome to all our public questioners, welcome to the meeting. You have the right to, first of all, obviously, ask your question and then the right to ask one supplementary question. Have I stressed that the supplementary question must be used to clarify the answer you were first given? It's not to be used as an opportunity to amplify or ask another question not related to the initial response. So with those instructions, we'll go to the first questioner, and the first question is from Mr Len Middleton.
Hello.
Mr Middleton, oh, you've already done it, I was going to say, could you please press star sticker? You're obviously well ahead of me, well done.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right. Welcome.
I'm a bit previous.
Okay, don't worry. And would you like to ask your question, please, Mr Middleton?
Yeah, so my question is about EU citizens in Reading who were caught up in events over which they have no control. And the deadline for EU citizen registration for settled status is the 30th of June this year. I'm conscious that the self-employed or workers in the gig economy and anybody living in less formal circumstances will have little help. Some councils are taking active steps to contact EU residents, i.e. Brighton and Hove have delivered a postcard to all addresses in the city with a friendly message on the front, 'We want EU citizens to stay in Brighton and Hove', and providing information sources including phone numbers on the back. Given that there are a large number of EU citizens in Reading, what plans does the council have to assist its residents with obtaining their new status? And I appear to have got two in here, has the council started to minimise the problems that it will face in social services and social care if EU citizens lose their status by helping people with whom it has direct contact?
So particularly cunning, Mr Middleton, to ask a second question there, but well done.
I'm sorry.
Don't worry. Councillor Brock, please, to reply.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank Mr Middleton for his question. The council values the contribution made by EU citizens in Reading and would encourage them to take advantage of the EU settlement scheme to ensure they can continue to enjoy living and working in the borough. The council put out a press release and social media feeds in February 2020 to remind EU citizens in Reading to apply to stay in the UK, providing the details of the government website. This information is also on the Brexit page on the council's website, reading.gov.uk/council/brexit. Residents are able to make an appointment for a UK visa and immigration systems to attend Reading Central Library to provide documentation required as part of their EU settlement scheme application. And the council has undertaken numerous internal campaigns reminding staff to apply for the EU settlement scheme and has taken a targeted approach in engaging staff working with residents and young people to apply for EU settlement status. In addition to the council's direct workforce, adult social care officers have been working with external providers since 2019 to ensure that their affected staff are supported to achieve settled status. This has included regular communications, signposting to provide further support and guidance around business continuity plans for those providers who consider themselves to be adversely affected. The situation is being monitored on a regular basis and we currently have no evidence to suggest that services will be overly disrupted. Staff from EU countries play a vital role in our Reading workforce and we've been keen to support them via their employers as much as possible. And so from now until June 2021, we plan to use materials from the national campaign across all of our communication channels to raise public awareness of the scheme.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Brock. Mr Middleton, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, I'm afraid. So first of all, thank you for your reply and for the work that you've done for EU citizens. So my supplementary question would be, when you say across our communication channels, is an insert going into council tax bills?
Can I go back, Mr Mayor?
Please do, sorry, yes, yes.
Thank you for the supplementary, Mr Middleton. It's an interesting question, I'll follow it up. There are some quite tight legal restrictions on what one can include with council tax bills, but if it's possible to include some kind of promotional material around the EU settlement scheme, it is something I would look to incorporate. But as I say, there are very strict regulations around that, but we'll look at whatever we can do across any of our other communication channels, including the next sort of all-residence newsletter whenever that goes out, which I think will be before the end of June, to make sure that we promote the scheme as widely as possible around the borough.
Okay, thank you councillor Brock, and also thank you, Mr Middleton, for your question. You're obviously very welcome to watch the rest of the meeting.
Thanks a lot as well from me.
Okay, pleasure. Second question is from Mr James Denny, again, same instruction. If you'd like to press star six, unmute yourself and you're ready, answer your question, ask your question, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Apologies, I'm masked up and on a bus, so I hope this comes across okay.
Yeah, we're clear.
Thank you very much. So my question is regarding provision for pupils with SEN, special educational needs in Reading. Can the Lead Councillor for Education please provide me with an update on the provision for pupils with special education needs in Reading? Thank you.
So thank you, Mr Denny. And I think councillor Pearce, you're going to answer this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr Matt. We're pleased that over the last few years, we've invested in capacity and resources in Reading for our young people with special educational needs and we continue to do so. We're currently working on a programme of significant capital investment to ensure we have local places for Reading children. Hamilton School, Ford and Felix College is in the process of being relocated to a more modern and appropriate site on Hamilton Road. The school helps pupils with social, emotional and mental health issues and this move will increase capacity for the future as well as now being able to accommodate female pupils. The Oak Tree Academy, a new school to be delivered in conjunction with Wokenham Borough, continues to progress and this will provide education for 150 young people with autism spectrum condition from year one to year 13. The school will be located in Winrush, will be run by the Maiden Early Trust and is due to open in September 2021. We're also in the process of identifying suitable locations for two new ASC units in our primary schools, one in the north and one in the west of the town. These will provide additional capacity for primary aged pupils with ASC alongside the existing facility at Christ the King. Alongside this, we're developing a support package for our resource bases to invest in school staff to have the necessary skills to support its children. For our existing mainstream schools, we've recently agreed to increase top-up fees, additional money schools receive for SEN pupils, by 5%, which we hope will go some way to help plug the gap in funding. These plans are on top of work in previous years, including the opening of the Blessed Mary Ward Centre located at Blessed Farringdon Catholic School in Southcote that provides 30 places for youngsters with autism spectrum disorder. We have hit 100% of our EHCPs being completed within the statutory timeline for September, December and most recently, January. In January 2019, this figure was just 49%. This investment is alongside all our schools' work in becoming trauma-informed, examining the influence and impact on students in our schools of factors such as racism, poverty, peer victimisation, community violence and bullying. These steps are helping to ensure pupils are getting the most appropriate education in a suitable location nearer to their friends, families and communities. Further to this, we'll be reviewing and updating our SEM strategy later this year in full consultation with schools, parents and pupils.
Thank you councillor Pearce. Mr Denny, do you have a supplementary one to ask as well to that question?
Yes, thank you councillor, thank you, Mr Mayor. Apologies, I should have introduced myself at the beginning, perhaps those who don't know me, candidate for Peppard Ward and also Secretary for Neurodivergent Labour nationally. My subsequent supplementary with thanks to councillor Pearce for that answer is, would you support the view that healing children from ASD conditions has no place whatsoever in education and would never be welcome in Reading schools?
Thank you, Mr Denny. Yes, absolutely. Obviously, with a package of support that we've got available for our students, this is something that we'd be in complete agreement with you. So yes, I can completely concur with that.
Okay, so thank you both. Again, thank you, Mr Denny, and again, you're welcome to try and listen if you so wish for the rest of your bus journey, but thank you for your question. Okay, so the next two questions are from Alice Mpufo Coles. So again, Ms Coles, if you would just press star six to unmute yourself and when you're ready, you can ask your first question.
Good evening, Mr Mayor. My question is to the Lead Councillor for Education. It's mainly about decolonisation of the primary and secondary school curriculum in Reading schools. Could you please let us know as the Lead Councillor for Education, what steps are being taken to decolonise the curriculum in primary and secondary schools in Reading?
So thank you for your question, councillor Pearce.
Thank you for this question. It's an extremely important area and I'm pleased to report the activities we have in hand for supporting our schools. You'll be aware that schools must teach the national curriculum in line with guidance from the government, so our role locally is quite limited. However, I agree with the Labour leader Keir Starmer when he said pupils should learn more Black History in schools. Our support is therefore focused on enabling schools to look at the national curriculum in a way which embeds good anti-racist practice. To this end, a strategy is being developed to embed good anti-racist practice with all of our schools. The main aims of this are to support schools to embed good anti-racist practice into the current school curriculum, particularly Black British history. Collaboration, develop links with national and local groups to gain a greater understanding of racism and the role of diversity in creating Reading's communities. Improve recruitment strategies in schools to ensure that there are no barriers to BAME candidates being recruited. To offer professional development for school staff, some of the key areas to focus on here are understanding white privilege, understanding cultural differences, deconstructing a colonial worldview, knowledge about Black History, communicating the experiences of BAME children and families, overcoming fragility and working with sensitive issues. We're also looking to develop therapeutic approaches to dealing with racism within our schools, review and improve how schools deal with any racism. We're currently in the process of appointing a lead practitioner to support this work across Reading schools. We have had eight expressions of interest in the role so far. We've organised a meeting with representatives from Reading International Solidarity Centre next month to develop and refine our strategy further. RISC is a development education centre which works with schools and community groups to raise the profile of global issues and promote action for sustainability, human rights and social justice. We're working with a consultant who is a member of the BAMED network to create a training offer for schools in the remainder of the academic year. The BAMED network connects, enables and showcases the talent of diverse educators so they may inspire future generations and open up possibilities within education careers. The steering group members are volunteers who commit their time and efforts into creating a support network to equip teachers and leaders with the tools to progress into and through the workforce. The group connects with other education organisations and individuals through events and regional networks across the UK. This government may not believe that Black History should be a compulsory part of the curriculum and until we get a Labour government, we can't change that, but we will continue to do everything we can locally to help and support our schools in delivering a fully inclusive curriculum.
Thank you councillor Pearce. Mr Mpufo Coles, do you have a supplementary question to that?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that then. So that's question three, and I think you're now also going to ask the next question, question four.
Yes, the next question is to the Lead Councillor for Neighbours and Communities. It's about the black bins. There are some local residents who have previously paid extra for the extra big black bins as they have disabled members of the family who use in continent pads and now have smaller black bins. Could you advise of the process of how they can continue to meet environmental needs but have space to dispose of the waste?
Thank you very much, councillor Bonnet Ward.
Thank you for the question. It's the council's policy not to issue larger bins as a matter of course in order to control the amount of waste being presented. The council does not charge residents for larger bins or for secondary cycling or food waste bins. Charges only apply to supply of green domestic bins to newly built properties or if they've been damaged by residents. Until April 2020, new bins were subject to a delivery charge, but this no longer applies. The council will continue to provide additional capacity free of charge for those residents who satisfy the criteria set out in the Waste Service Standard, which is available on the council's website. The council provide the following means of disposing of non-hazardous absorbent hygiene products. If the volumes dictate, they can be placed in the grey domestic collection bin. If the 140-litre bin capacity proves to be insufficient, residents can apply for extra capacity via the council website and in the text of the question, we've got the link there. Their application will be assessed and if the relevant criteria are met, a larger bin will be issued free of charge with no delivery charge or a roll of sacks with no delivery charge. If the assessment team feels it's more appropriate, residents may be offered a weekly clinical waste collection rather than a larger bin. The clinical waste service is available if a resident produces a large amount of non-hazardous healthcare waste, such as in continent pads. If a resident is self-treating a medical condition and has healthcare or clinical waste which could potentially carry an infection, for example needles, syringes or other sharp instruments, any waste which contains blood or bodily fluids, human tissues, swabs or dressings, drugs or pharmaceutical products. The council will collect these free of charge on request. If a resident is in receipt of care from a healthcare professional, any sharps or healthcare hazardous waste produced during treatment should be removed and disposed of by the healthcare professional. Residents requiring clinical waste collection should be referred to the council by their GP surgery, district nurse or NHS trust. Such referrals should be in writing, either by letter or email, and be clearly identifiable as coming from the patient's medical providers. Households that require the collection of clinical waste of this nature will be reviewed every two years for eligibility to receive the service.
Thank you much, councillor Bonnet Ward. So, Ms Mpufo Coles, do you have a supplementary to that?
No, I don't. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much for your questions then. Again, you're very welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you so wish. So, next question, it's our fifth question from Mr Andrew Hornsby Smith. Again, Mr Hornsby, if you'd like to press star six, you can then ask.
Good evening, Mr Matt. Good evening, councillor. Hello. Would the Lead Councillor for Housing please confirm that in the light of the government's refusal to end the prohibition on evictions even while we're still in lockdown, what measures the council are taking to ensure that robust arrangements are in place to mediate between landlords and tenants finding themselves without the ability to pay their rent? Secondly, for those renting in many parts of the town and particularly in areas such as Redlands, there are concerns that some landlords of HMOs are not legally registered and that in some cases, tenants in HMOs and tenants generally are unsure of their rights. What steps is the council taking to provide advice to private renters and what levels of enforcement are in place? Will he undertake to ensure that advice is readily available to tenants and that this is widely publicised?
Thank you very much, councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Hornsby-Smith. In response to the financial situation that many households may find themselves as a result of the pandemic, the council is in the process of developing two web-based resources, one for tenants and one for landlords, which then, which when launched will be accompanied by an advertising campaign focused on reaching those who are not used to accessing council services already and who may not be aware how much support we can offer both landlords and their tenants. The Money Matters website is being designed for all tenants, all for tenants who have concerns about their financial situation and provides information about the resources available and how to access them. The Click Before You Evict website is being designed for landlords who are looking for help with their tenancies and will cover issues such as disrepair and antisocial behaviour as well as financial concerns. Both websites will be created to offer maximum accessibility. Both will include video information which can be subtitled into a variety of languages. And Click Before You Evict will also offer information sheets which can be downloaded as PDFs, which a landlord could give to a tenant who was not able to access the information digitally. The council's homelessness prevention teams continue to provide advice and assistance to tenants who contact us with concerns about their tenancies, including rent arrears. Officers provide advice and support to tenants and mediate or negotiate with landlords as required. Resources available to rescue tenancies where tenants have financial problems include referral to the Rent Guaranteed Money Scheme, Money Advisor or to the Debt Advice Team, use of the Homelessness Prevention Fund and discretionary housing payment to resolve arrears and secure accommodation and bring in the tenancy onto the Rent Guaranteed Scheme. Those households that are most at risk financially are being proactively contacted to determine what support may be offered. Additionally, the Housing Needs Service has appointed a Tenancy Relations Officer and on a one-year fixed term basis to provide specialist advice and support to tenants and landlords. The majority of cases referred to this officer will involve rent arrears where mediation can be carried out between tenants and landlords. Between tenants and landlords. It is intended that this officer provides specific assistance to tenants where there is a threat of illegal eviction. Over 700 households in the borough are accommodated in the private rented sector with assistance from the Rent Guaranteed Scheme. Rent is paid by the council directly to the landlord on the tenant's behalf and the council then collects the rent from the tenant. This means that landlords are not affected by any changes in the tenant's income or ability to pay their rent and the tenancies are therefore secured. On the Rent Guaranteed Scheme, tenants who find themselves unable to pay their rent have a wide variety of help and resources available to them, including the Rent Guaranteed Scheme, Money Advisor and Debt Advice Team who provide specialised advice and access to discretionary additional funding where required. The Private Sector Housing Team is responsible for investigation of complaints of disrepair across the private rented sector and enforcing the council's houses in multiple occupation licensing scheme. Detail advice and ways to contact the council about any concerns are available via the council's website. The website also includes an up-to-date register of all HMOs that are licensed. Members of the public can simply add forward slash HMO to the council's website address to find out more. It is worth noting that currently not all HMOs are required to be licensed. The current criteria is those properties with five or more people forming two or more households sharing amenities such as kitchens and bathrooms. There are currently 1,307 licensed HMOs in the borough. The council investigates complaints and where necessary has power to take enforcement action for failure to protect tenants' health and welfare, poor management or breaches of conditions of a licence. Where there is a serious or persistent non-compliance by a landlord, the council can prosecute, can prosecute. An example of this was a successful prosecution held at Reading Magistrates Court on Friday the 18th, December 2020, whereby the landlord was fined £66,000 plus costs in excess of £4,000. As an alternative to prosecution, the council also issued financial penalties of up to £30,000. For example, in the financial year 2019-20, the council issued nine financial penalties relating to HMO licence offences. Recognising that tenants are often concerned about financial protections, a trading standards officer has been embedded in the team to focus on compliance of legislation such as the Tenants' Fee Act 2019, which controls the fees that tenants can be charged, the Consumer Protection from Unfair Trading Relegations 2008, which protects tenants from unfair practices by landlords and letting agents, Consumer Rights Act 2015 that controls contractual obligations and also ensuring agents have an appropriate redress scheme and client money protection in place. The team also operates the council's Reading Rent With Confidence Scheme. The aim of this discretionary scheme is to rate properties in the private rented sector based on the scheme's criteria relating to the quality of accommodation, along with good management practices. They receive a bronze, silver or gold award. Properties and management practices are vetted during the application process. Successful candidates are helped with the promotion of their properties, a website currently being developed for this, and with the advice about regulatory matters. The idea of this is to provide good landlords with a market advantage over rogue landlords and potential tenants with confidence as to the property standards they are renting. Prior to the pandemic, a regular drop-in session was held at Reading University to provide advice to students on their rights and responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Ennis. Mr Hornsby-Smith, do you have a supplementary might want to ask?
I do. First of all, I'd like, yes, I'd like to thank councillor Ennis for his comprehensive answer. It's very welcome news about the extra resourcing and support that's going into these areas. You mentioned targeted advertising to those who are most vulnerable and least likely to access online advice. Will this advertising also include details of the Reading Rent With Confidence Scheme and an accessible summary of tenants' rights set out in the list of legislations that you cited in your responses?
councillor Ennis.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Hornsby-Smith, for the supplementary. It won't be as long as the first answer. I would expect so that this would be the case because we're trying to work with as many vulnerable tenants as possible to avoid homelessness. But I will verify, I will check and verify and come back to you if you want to make contact with me. So thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Mr Hornsby, thank you all so much. As I say, you're very welcome to watch the rest of the meeting if you have nothing else you'd rather be doing this evening. So we move on, I think we've just got about time for our last question. Miss Caroline Lyles, Miss Lyle, would you like to press star six, unmute yourself and ask your question, please?
Hello.
Good evening.
Right, please could the council leader tell me the plan of action for contacting church wards EU citizens so that nobody fails to apply for settled status before the deadline at the end of June?
And that question has been directed to councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank Ms Lyle for the question and refer her to my response to public question number one this evening, which covered comprehensively the borough-wide approach. Happy to take a supplementary, of course, Mr Mayor.
Ms Lyle, do you have one?
Just to say, let's not forget children in care, young people who have just left care and senior citizens in council care.
Okay, well, thank you much for the mention of that. And so that concludes questions from members of the public. So thank you all, members of the public, for doing that and asking those questions. So next item, item six is questions from councillors and we have three of those. So the first one is councillor Josh Williams. So you'd like to ask your question on the local electoral system, I believe?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Yes, please, thank you. In England, the electoral system means we often get councils that do not represent what people voted for. The Green Party in Reading believes in a fairer local electoral system, which more accurately reflects people's wishes. Does the leader of the council agree that it's time we ended the broken first past the post system and brought in a more proportional system that would help open local democracy and make sure all voters' voices are heard? Will he lobby on behalf of the people of Reading for the chance to move to a system that gives voters more choice, ensures their vote counts and delivers greater representation? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. All electoral systems have merits and demerits and no system produces perfect outcomes according to some imagined gold standard. But if we start on the premise that wards are a desirable building block of local council representation, and I think that they are, and accept the settled position of this council that election by thirds is appropriate for Reading, one is left with relatively few plausible options for reform. On balance, I think I would support a shift to the supplementary vote system for local elections. It is familiar to voters in our area, being used for the Thames Valley Police and Crime Commissioner election and offers an opportunity to take second preferences of voters into account. I can also see a case for a mixed-member top-up system with overhanged seats, but as I say, all systems involve compromises. Independent of my personal views, I won't be prioritising electoral change as a lobbying activity and such an effort would be more appropriately led by the LGA and the council would play a part in this as appropriate. There are also a great many issues of far greater importance to Reading's residents at the present time and it is appropriate that I focus on those. Even if I were to focus on purely electoral matters, I would feel that a drive to increase voter turnout is far more appropriate. Messing around with electoral systems when turnout is low often feels to me like an indulgence driven by those who have only architectonic solutions to structural issues and often seems to come from a condescending place vis-à-vis the electorate.
Well, that's Brock. I think it, councillor Williams, a supplementary perhaps?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, architectonic?
I think he's asking you to define it, councillor Brock.
To define architectonic, it is an architecture. It is erecting an architecture as a solution rather than thinking about the more holistic issues that may be at play.
Thank you very much. We've all come to learn this evening. Okay, thank you councillor Brock. So the next question is councillor White. Questioner is councillor White.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This question is to the Lead Councillor for Corporate and Consumer Services and it is on agency manager day rates. Please can the Lead Councillor, please can the Lead Councillor confirm the day rates of the 10 highest-paid agency managers working for the council or for Brighter Futures for Children and how long each has been working for the council or for Brighter Futures for Children? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor White. If I've got this right, I've got councillor Brock to reply again.
Chair, it's actually councillor Emerson to respond if I may.
Of course, ensign.
The council makes use of interim managers to provide cover for key funded vacant posts or for a fixed period to deliver a specific piece of work where it would not be practical or possible to employ a permanent member of staff. In both instances, engagements of this type are only undertaken following strict scrutiny of the requirement. The below table presents a direct response to your question councillor White and I won't read the whole table, otherwise we'd be here all night. In recent years, the council has significantly reduced spend on interim managers and agency staff in total. This focus continues and forms part of our People's Strategy team Reading. The below table demonstrates the significant reduction in both interim and agency spend in recent years across both Reading Borough Council and Brighter Futures for Children. To summarise, RBC spend on interim managers has decreased by over 60% since 2017 to 2018. Brighter Futures for Children's spend on interim managers projected have decreased by 34% by the end of this financial year. Overall, Reading Borough Council's spend on temporary agency workers is projected to have decreased by 42% by the end of the current financial year. Overall, Brighter Futures for Children's spend on temporary agency workers is projected to have decreased by 22% by the end of the current financial year. And the combined interim manager spend of both Brighter Futures for Children and Reading Borough Council spend is projected to decrease by 45% by the end of the current financial year. Finally, the combined temporary agency worker spend projected is projected to have been decreased by 31% by the end of the current financial year. And then there's the final table, which I won't read.
Thank you councillor Emerson. So councillor White, do you have a supplementary to that answer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to councillor Emerson for her answer. Yeah, 24 months for the corporate parenting lead jumps out at me from the table of day rates. That's, I think, £689 a day, not the highest. The highest is £975 a day. Can she clarify what the reason is for such a long-serving temporary manager?
councillor Emerson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm not going to comment on Brighter Futures matters because we have a Lead Councillor for Brighter Futures and I don't know the ins and outs of every single person which we hire. I have no doubt that councillor Terry would be more than happy to respond to councillor White on the specifics regarding that position. But if I could just clarify, Mr Mayor, regarding the top-paid position of Assistant Director for Finance, which councillor White referred to, I would point out that we have been unsuccessful in recruitment last year for this post, having had the previous Assistant Director depart the council. And that is an example where it's not been possible or indeed practical to not have someone in that post and that's why we've required the agency spend. But I would suggest councillor White pick up regarding the corporate parenting lead with councillor Terry.
Okay, we're not going to put councillor Terry on the spot just now with a supplementary question, but obviously you can correspond after the meeting. So the third question from councillors is from councillor McGonigal. So the councillor McGonigal, would you like to ask your question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I seem to be having trouble with the camera, so I'll just read the question.
Okay, we can hear you. We can hear you. Carry on.
Once again, it is necessary to raise the issue of double parking outside the shops and Alfred Sutton School on Wokingham Road. All attempts to resolve the problem so far have failed to stop people from double parking and thereby creating a hazardous situation for drivers, cyclists and pedestrians. The red route camera car only passes approximately once an hour and only for some of the day. The new pay and display 30 minutes parking is not being enforced. There is not enough provision for shop delivery vehicles and people are still parking on the chevrons in the middle of the road to visit takeaways. When a bus passes, double parked vehicles, traffic coming from the other direction is forced to stop. Local residents are at their wits' end and further measures are required in this small but highly congested area. We ask RBC.
I can no longer hear councillor McGonigal. Can I be?
I can hear.
I can hear, Mr Mayor.
Okay.
We can hear him.
Local residents are at their wits' end and further measures are required in this small but highly congested area. We ask RBC to seriously consider installing static cameras plus more effective enforcement in this location. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, you seem to have gone off. Anyway, Mr Mayor, I thank councillor McGonigal for her question. I understand the concerns about parking abuse in this area and officers continue to work to develop our enforcement operations across the borough. The red route was introduced to help with enforcement and as technology improves, so does our ability to enforce the red route restrictions, not just here but across the whole route. As you may know, we are currently reviewing our parking strategy and enforcement options for the future. Currently, our enforcement operations are contracted and officers meet regularly. Currently, our enforcement operations are contracted and officers meet regularly with the enforcement contractor to discuss issues across the borough. It's through these meetings that the need for an additional enforcement vehicle has been identified. With an additional enforcement vehicle using the latest technologies, we expect to see more penalty charges being issued for the type of parking contravention occurring within this area of Wokingham Road. We cannot always stop drivers behaving in this way, but we can and will issue penalties and the message will get through that we will not tolerate this type of inconsiderate and selfish parking that creates problems for other road users. The pay and display restrictions that councillor McGonigal just referred to have just been changed and now require drivers to display a ticket when parked. Enforcement of this new restriction only commenced yesterday, following two weeks of warning notices. The loading provision has been explored by officers previously in consultation with ward councillors, as has this recent change to the pay and display and the red route. We will keep the situation under review and officers will be more than happy to hear from ward councillors. Regrettably, static cameras are too inflexible and will not solve the issues of irresponsible parking that currently occur in this area. I do know that the latest technology fitted to our enforcement vehicles can pick up cars parked in the middle of the road and at awkward angles on the footway. Both officers and our current contractor are well aware of the issues here and at a relatively small number of other locations in the borough. And they are determined to bring these drivers to account and achieve improved parking compliance for the benefit of all other road users. So, drivers that continue to park irresponsibly are on borrowed time and will be caught and penalised accordingly. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I dare say that we've lost the mayor from the meeting, or that he may have just returned.
I managed to break that again.
Oh, phew. I thought I was going to ask to step up for a second there, councillor.
You were primes, councillor, weren't you, just?
I was on the edge of my seat, councillor.
Some have greatness thrust upon them, but not quite today, I suppose.
Snap, snap.
Mr Mayor, councillor McGonigal is entitled to ask a supplementary. I've finished my answer.
So please crack on then. Yeah, just resume. So councillor McGonigal, you ask your supplementary?
No, thank you.
No?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you both. Sorry about that. You lost me there for a few moments. Hopefully we'll stay with the meeting. Okay, so that then completes questions from councillors. Yes, indeed. So from that, we then move on to the substantive business of the meeting, and that's the budget and the medium term financial plan and the associated reports. And as with previous years, I'm going to take all the reports relating to the budget and the council tax setting as a composite item. The motion that we will shortly be considering will cover the Chief Finance Officer's report on the robustness of the council's 2021/22 budget, 21/22 budget and medium term financial strategy to 2024, the draft capital strategy, council tax setting 2021/22, and the Treasury Management Strategy, which are agenda items seven to 11 in your packs. And the composite motion covers the recommendations contained within each of those reports. My main reason for approaching this in this way is so that the full implications of any amendments can be considered across all the decisions before us this evening. It will also avoid the possibility that if we take the reports as one at a time, an amendment may be put that could have an impact on a previous motion or amendment that's already been carried. I'll shortly ask councillor Brock to speak and move the motion based on the recommendations set out in the reports. I'll take this opportunity to remind officers, we'll be timing the leader's speech on this motion. And in line with previous practice, I'll then allow all group leaders the same amount of time to speak on the motion. And with that, councillor Brock, would you like to introduce the items?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good to have you back. I'm sure you only slipped out of the meeting to brief councillor Skeets. I wish dearly I could say that it's been an uneventful year. But assembling tonight's budget has taken an incredible effort from all involved in its preparation. And I want to take a moment to thank officers for their work alongside all of the lead councillors and the Labour Group and indeed all who commented on the consultation on the draft budget, which went through Policy Committee in December. In the context of a pandemic which has required a monumental effort from the council to protect residents and respond to an ever changing situation whilst also delivering business as usual, the presentation of a fully costed and balanced budget for 21/22 is no mean feat. The pandemic has, of course, dominated our lives for the past 12 months. Our experiences have all been tempered by a nemesis that we cannot see, but that we all perceive the effects of. Many of us here tonight will have experienced personal loss and will know people who have had their lives turned upside down by Covid directly or by the corollary ramifications of the pandemic. And it is appropriate that we keep in our thoughts tonight and as we move forward, all those who have lost their lives throughout the pandemic. The deaths of others, friends, family, neighbours, acquaintances necessarily makes us reflective. Much has been said of building back better, but little has been made concrete of this concept. But nevertheless, I think it is a sentiment that we must collectively hold as we move into what I sincerely hope is the beginning of the end of the pandemic. Similarly, and more specifically to Reading, we must also hold firmly on to our collective responsibility as councillors to do the right thing by the residents of our town and seek always to deliver what we can to improve lives and offer a future that is more positive and more hopeful. A future possessed of greater opportunities for everyone to get ahead and flourish. And I do not mean to say that councils can or must eliminate all the wrongs in the world. Clearly, we cannot. Any leader, any councillor, who had the hubris to set such a goal or think such a dream was achievable, anyone who thought that this council can make up for each and every failure of the responsibility of national government to fulfil its duties to its citizens would be set up for a fall. Because embarking on such a folly would necessarily mean setting our attention and the taxpayers' money to tasks that have no hope of success. So, Mr Mayor, we cannot chase the politics of fantasy. We, in this Labour administration, hold the trust of the electorate of Reading for only as long as we deliver real, meaningful and tangible benefits for the residents of Reading. We must be aspirational, but we must be successful. We must be dreamers at times, yes, but we must be efficient and effective strategists, planners, resources and community champions at all times. And we must be disciplined and prudent with both the powers and the finances put at our disposal because they are held in trust and not at a whim. So the task of setting a responsible but ambitious budget, as Reading rightly deserves, is made all the more difficult by a Conservative government that continues to fail in its responsibility to deliver fair funding arrangements to councils. Now, lest the leader of the opposition tonight accuse me of ignoring it, I do acknowledge the financial support that has been passed on to us from the government in this financial year. But it is still less, of course, than the sum of the cuts we have endured from them since 2010. So hardly a revolution in generosity. But short term financing ignores the reality that local government across the country is on its knees. It has delivered and delivered far more successfully than national government. Essential relief throughout the pandemic. Just look at this council's work to get grants out to businesses across the town, let alone the work of the One Reading Community Hub, together with our voluntary and community sector partners. This was work more vital than, for example, a discounted meal at Nando's provided by the Tories. But the recognition for all of our efforts is the government boasts an increase in core spending power for councils. So what is this increase in core spending power? Well, it's simply the ability to levy a 3% rise in the adult social care precept. Another sticking plaster for a service so valuable and so essential that the entire public health response to the pandemic would have fallen apart at the seams if councils hadn't done their job. A service so vital that the government promised a revolutionary plan for it was ready and waiting, but has yet to produce any sight of it. And now, unlike the Conservatives, Labour recognises the value of adult social care and it is rightly among the centrepieces of our budget tonight. But I'll leave my colleague councillor Jones to elucidate on this in greater detail. The failure to produce a comprehensive financial settlement for local government demonstrates the core problem that the Conservatives have. Their Prime Minister, and I think maybe the whole Cabinet, seems intent on winning a head to head heat with Neville Chamberlain's ministry for the most prevaricating government of the modern era. The big questions, the key problems of our day are consistently dodged in favour of efforts to construct a phony culture war or a row about planning permissions or whether fish are British or some other non-issue. Even the adult social care precept is a decision sidestepped, forced onto someone else, forced onto us and onto other councils. A stoic view might be that it's better this way because their record, when they do try to take a decision, is so poor that inaction is preferable. But government cannot forever fail to do what needs to be done. And if it wants to abdicate all responsibility to local councils, then it needs to provide the funding reform to empower us to take all responsibility. So how do we in Reading then set a better example? Well, as always, I will defer to my front bench colleagues to set out their own areas of responsibility in greater detail. I do this because the leadership of this council is truly a collective effort. But I should take this opportunity to map out some of the key points. Remaining true to the maxim I laid down last year, that sustainability must be economic, it must be social and it must be environmental because the three are entirely intertwined. We have managed to protect key investment that will transform our town piece by piece and little by little. The new railway station at Green Park is still to be accompanied by the start of a regeneration of Reading West Station. This, alongside new active travel schemes and continued support for public transport provision throughout Reading, especially in partnership with Reading Buses, means that everything will coalesce together to help ensure that future travel into and around the town has a lower environmental impact, yielding air quality improvements. Taken together with the maintained 1.5 million to increase recycling rates, quarter of a million for new electric vehicle charging points and £7 million for initiatives to tackle climate change, there can be no doubt about our retained focus on being net carbon neutral by 2030. Similarly, and despite all of the challenges that the leisure sector has suffered, we maintain our £40 million commitment to new leisure facilities, which will deliver what this town really deserves in terms of fit for purpose and modern swimming provision. And we continue to move forward schemes to regenerate the Minster Quarter and strive to bring together partners to secure an imaginative scheme to unlock the potential of Reading Jail. Our £9 million investment in the town's roads and pavements is joined by schemes for new council housing, new adult social care facilities, new key worker housing, new temporary housing and partnership working to deliver further affordable provision across the town. Taken together, these schemes also promise to provide some local economic stimulus as we move beyond the pandemic's effects. And many also focus, as you'll note, on the need to tackle the town's housing crisis and to deliver social care services that set a gold standard in terms of facilities and care. We acknowledge also the challenges that children's services will doubtless face post pandemic, even at the same time as we congratulate them on moving out of intervention faster than even I had hoped. Additional investment is being made available to Brighter Futures for Children to allow them to continue their transformative work. And I pay particular tribute to their staff alongside staff in all Reading schools for their compassion, endurance and hard work in providing for the borough's children in one of the greatest collective challenges a young generation has faced since 1945. All of this positivity must be tempered by a recognition of the hard choices that have been made. No politician wants to raise council tax. But I would hope that the majority of our residents recognise that the council has to fund its services and this is a budget that delivers comprehensive protection of frontline delivery. For some context, the council maintains over 400 kilometres of roads, 800 kilometres of pavements, 18,500 street lights, 5,770 council houses, seven libraries, around 100 parks and open spaces, theatres, museums, leisure centres, schools, cemeteries and much, much more besides. It empties 18,860 household bins a day and provides 36,000 hours of home care for vulnerable adults a month. It operates a rent guarantee scheme for the private sector, owns a transport operator, commission services from across the voluntary sector, supports an economic development company and two business improvement districts. All of this protected alongside investment in the future. Sometimes I wish perhaps that there was a greater spotlight on all of this work. But maybe it's a mark of the success that we have that in a way, so much of it is just part of the seamless tapestry of our town's life. But I do acknowledge that a council tax rise will be difficult for some in our community. So we make available a one off grant to all recipients of our council tax support scheme universally and without the need for any application to ensure that those most in need have the cost of the increase mitigated in the forthcoming year. And since I know all council taxpayers demand value for money and quite rightly, we set ourselves the target of £28 million in savings over the three year medium term financial strategy period, following the £35 million already delivered and alongside a £2.5 million investment in improving our customer services for the benefit of residents across the town. And because we want to protect jobs and protect the quality of our jobs, we will work with our trade union colleagues to review terms and conditions where they have become outdated and seek to introduce innovations in our employment terms where they are needed. It would be wrong if we allowed historic factors to prevent us delivering the benefits that staff want and deserve today. I know that the unions will collaborate with us in finding agreement around this and I'm pleased to have already received constructive suggestions around potential savings from one local rep even today. And it is this collective and collaborative approach that will allow us to continue to set an exempt. that will allow us to continue to set an exemplar standard as an employer in Reading. We also draw on our reserves in the 2122 financial year to balance the budget, something we are able to do thanks to the sound management of the council's finances over the previous few years. Having faced financial struggles in the past, we know the value of prudent budgeting and it now helps us through a challenging period even as other councils across the country face the need to issue Section 114 notices or request capitalisation directives. But budgets shouldn't be based on smoke and mirrors. So we don't balance the remaining years of the MTFS at this point and recognise the need for sustainable solutions to be brought forward in next year's budget, especially in the expectation that government may at some point actually get around to producing a finance settlement for councils. I'm very proud that despite the adversity of circumstance, we have managed to bring forward this budget to protect services, deliver for residents and businesses and further secure the investment that Reading needs and deserves. But I'm filled with a trepidation too, a concern that the future will throw up further unexpected challenges. I'm sure we will rise to them as this Labour administration always has and I'm greatly confident in the imagination, the flexibility and the pragmatism of this team, both on the front bench and beyond. And a final thought though, if I may, which is to say, Mr Mayor, I do very much look forward to us having this debate in person next year. I've missed the direct interaction the physical meeting allows. And while I think we've all adapted to online meetings extremely effectively, the limitations of the format do show through more so with the big events of the council calendar. And I would count the budget as one of those tonight. But nonetheless, I look forward to a probing debate. Mr Mayor, I commend this budget to the council and I move the composite motion as printed. Thank you.
So thank you very much, councillor Brock. Um, no, councillor Jones, I think you're going to second this. Do you want to speak now or reserve your right?
I'd like to speak now.
That's fine. And just then I'll say to you and just remind all other councillors, with the exception of leaders, you've got five minutes. I'm afraid we haven't got a red and a green light. So I think Mr Graham will probably tell you we've got four minutes down and, uh, and one minute left. I total five minutes to speak. All yours.
Yeah, I wish to second the motion covering items seven to eleven on tonight's agenda. And in doing so, I wish to concentrate my remarks on the council's wish to seek the additional three percent adult social care precept to next year's council tax. However, Mr Mayor, perhaps you'll allow me to spend a moment or two to reflect on what has been a challenging year in this COVID-laden 12 months. And in doing so, take this opportunity to thank all the council staff for their magnificent efforts. In particular, Shona Douglas and her colleagues in adult social care deserve our thanks for the work they have done undertaking support for our town's most vulnerable residents. Their commitment in the evenings and at night, at weekends, even on Christmas Day, has often gone unnoticed. Perhaps they were just doing their jobs, but we should still acknowledge them and thank them, and I do so publicly now. But back to the budget. No one likes asking people to pay more for a service. I certainly don't like asking or being asked. But the truth is, this year, councils up and down the land of all political colours will be asking their residents to pay more to support adult social care. So why is this? Well, we have a national system of funding for adult social care which is broken. We have rising demands, rising costs, but an apparent reluctance to do anything about it. It is a broken system which underfunds local councils, underfunds carers and care homes and robs people at the end of their lives and their families of their lifelong savings and assets. You will have heard me before refer to the fact that in July 2019, on his first day as Prime Minister, Boris Johnson stood on the steps of Downing Street and said he'd a clear path planned to fix the crisis in home care for once and for all. Prime Minister, where is that plan? This is a broken promise and we are still waiting. Before the last general election in December 2019, the Tory manifesto promised that nobody should have to sell their home to pay for care. Have they done anything about fulfilling that promise? No. In fact, few people will know that every year this council has to collect money owed to us from the estates of people who have died in care and owe us money. We take money from their assets. And now, earlier this month, the government has announced a new health and social care bill. Its proposals say much about tearing at many of the Tories' own reforms of the NHS in 2011. But sadly, there are no proposals to address the ongoing crisis in social care funding, a wasted opportunity which will leave individuals, families and councils still facing funding gaps we all struggle to meet. So if this council is able to raise extra cash from the council tax, can we be trusted to spend it wisely? Councillors, and like many other councillors, here in Reading, adult social care has a track record of delivering services while living within our means. We do not overspend. And we will always do what's right, even sometimes if that means defying the government. During this pandemic, councils were instructed to identify hot care homes where NHS patients could be discharged to free up hospital beds. We disagreed. Instead, we believed a better course would be to use a hotel as a safer destination for patients from the Royal Parks Hospital. It was a success. In fact, such a great success, it has since been endorsed by government and copied by many other councils. They have to do the right thing. Extra resources will allow us to proceed with our ambitious plans for a £40 million programme which will transform our services for a generation which we laid out in detail at Policy Committee. I'm sure my colleague councillor Ennis may wish to comment on the joint work with housing, which will deliver more housing as part of this package. We want people to be able to live in their family homes for as long as possible, to stay out of care homes, that is at the heart of what we do. But this costs money. So to the council and the people of Reading, I say, give us the extra money, we can be trusted to spend it wisely and help us to help you, your parents, your friends, your loved ones, the dignity of a better and longer life. Mr Mayor, I saw a move.
Thank you very much, councillor Jones. So we're now going to move to councillor Skeets.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A year ago, I, on behalf of the Conservative group, assured the leader of the council that we would do all we could and where possible, to work together cross-party during this difficult time of the COVID-19 pandemic for the sake of all Reading residents. I believe over the past year, we have done so. Of course, at that time, none of us knew how long the pandemic and the lockdown would go on for. And a year on, here we are, still living life in lockdown. Although the Prime Minister's announcement yesterday of the government's plan to ease the country out of lockdown is promising and welcome, hopefully it will be successful in gradually returning everyday life and businesses to some form of normalcy. We have faced an extraordinarily difficult year. And so I wish to take this opportunity, if I may, Mr Mayor, to give credit and thanks to all Reading Borough Council officers and staff for keeping our services going. And of course, in that I include Peter Sloman, our chief executive. Elderly care has continued, our streets have been cleaned and our refuse collected, just to name a few of our vital services. This was done against a backdrop of a massive fall in income from fees, charges, penalties and sales. The pressure from COVID on our authority resulted in an estimated 19.2 million pounds overspend on the general fund. But we should note Reading Borough Council received a 16.6 million from central government during 2020 and a further government grant of 3.5 million was given in December 2020. And I'm pleased that councillor Brock and his speech actually gave and acknowledged the generosity of the government. Also, Reading Borough Council took advantage of the government's further scheme for a number of staff. So we would say Reading Borough Council has not been left worse off due to COVID-19. We acknowledge you have set a balanced budget for 2021, 22. But note, this relies of drawing three million pounds from reserves. Clearly, that is not sustainable and so further spending reductions will need to be found in subsequent years. We understand the pressure on services. But even in control, we would have resisted the three percent increase in the adult social care precept. We note some of our neighbouring authorities have been able to do this, so we believe that this is achievable. Whilst we appreciate finances are tight for local government, we are also actually aware things have been extremely difficult for businesses and families. Many small businesses have had to close and family incomes have been reduced. Even with financial aid from central government, many of our residents in Reading are still facing hardship. So tonight, Mr Mayor, we shall oppose this Labour administration's council tax hike of 4.99%. I would just like to say that following, um, listening to councillor Brock's speech where he criticised the government, I would just like to remind him that actually this country has voted for their preferred government and it sure wasn't Labour. It was a Conservative government. So I will end my speech there, Mr Mayor, and I thank you.
Sorry, councillor Skeets, thank you very much indeed. So next we go to councillor Rob White, lead of the Greens.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I share councillor Brock's thoughts on reflecting on those who have sadly died during the pandemic and their friends and families. I was just about to set a timer for my speech, but seeing as councillor Brock went on for 17 minutes, it's highly unlikely I'm going to reach those dizzy heights. Green councillors want people and planet put first in the council's budget. Should be focused on a green, jobs-led recovery from the pandemic. We support some of the proposals in the budget, but we also have a number of concerns about the budget. But before I go too much further into the council's budget, I'd like to acknowledge and draw attention to the fact that it is Conservative government, it is the Conservative government that has devastatingly inflicted cuts on councils around the country. On the budget, Greens support the one-off grant to help those on low incomes manage the council tax increase. Many people are struggling at the moment and the council should rightly be helping people as much as it can.
Councillor White, sorry, you're very faint. People are begging you, perhaps believe that's it.
Ah, yeah, thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
It was better before, but I suppose we ought to hear you.
Would you like me to start again?
No, we can hear you, hello.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, let me just find my place again. We are concerned about cuts to areas like the drugs and alcohol service, staff pay terms and conditions, and we're concerned that the council isn't doing enough on climate change. The drugs and alcohol service services support people with things like detox services, health assessments, needle exchange and more. Drug-related deaths are at their highest level for a quarter of a century in England and Wales. The budget papers say that £50,000 will be saved by either combining the alcohol services or consolidating posts. This will be less money and less capacity. This service has previously been targeted for cuts and they are not able to deal with the current level of need, let alone with reduced capacity following the proposed budget cut. The, the drugs and alcohol services deal with some of our most vulnerable residents. They are being further hollowed out and green councillors oppose this. I would like to thank council staff, as others have done, for their hard work over what has been an incredibly tough year. Green councillors are concerned about Labour councillor plans to cut the pay terms and conditions of some Reading council staff. The council is looking at cutting overtime and social hours allowance and pay protection for council staff, including some of our care workers, which would save the council £326,000. This is no way to thank people who have put their lives on the line during the pandemic. We asked for the business case document to be made public in December, but disappointingly, Labour councillors said no. When the council said that we could share the business cases in February thi- this month, the unions were very surprised by the cuts to terms and conditions. Despite the business case, the relevant business case stating that negotiations with the unions would start in December, they hadn't been told anything. Last budget, these business cases were made public on the council's website. This year, the only place you will find them is on my blog. And so it is impossible for anyone to make a sense of the savings listed in the budget because each one is just a sentence and often very vague and cryptic. The changes to terms and conditions may save money in the short term, but as the secret business case document acknowledges, they will worsen staff morale. This will cause experienced staff to leave the council. The council will have to pay more for agency staff. Costs will go up and the service that residents experience in the affected areas will worsen. Worryingly, quoting from the hidden business case, for these savings to be realised, the council will have to terminate employees' contracts and re-engage them on a new contract with varied terms. That's the end of the quote. This approach is known as fire and rehire and the business case says that this will happen in September 2021 if collective and individual negotiations fail. Nationally, Labour says this practice has no place in modern Britain. It looks like Reading Labour councillors didn't get that memo. Having fire and rehire in the council plan is negotiating with a loaded gun on the table. I hope Labour councillors will confirm tonight that they are taking this gun off the table and they will remove fire and rehire from their plan. Greens will continue to work with the unions to stand up for workers in Reading, especially those providing essential public, public services. We, moving on, we are concerned that the level of investment into tackling climate change isn't as high as it needs to be. Mr Mayor, on this subject, I would like to move an amendment to get more homes insulated in the town, which will cut our carbon emissions, tackle fuel poverty and create jobs. I believe this resets the clock and having not done this virtually before, if I hand back to you for a second, Mr Mayor, would you like to explain how this is going to work?
Thank you, councillor White. So first of all, do we have a second to your amendment?
Yes, councillor Wittem.
And we can hear him, can we? Councillor Wittem?
And then speak after the proposer.
Okay, so we've got a second, very good, right. So the way, as we say, this works is first of all, normally we would circulate the, um, proposed amendment to, to members in front of their desks. We can't do that. of their desks. We can't do that, but I think hopefully everybody can see on the screen, we can see the councillor White amendment in front of us. So what I'll now do is take submissions or contributions on the amendment. And I would ask people, please, we've got a very long list of speakers on the main motion to keep it fairly taut, otherwise we'll be here for the small hours. So councillor Wittem, do you want to speak now to the amendment or reserve your right?
Mr Mayor, just to ask if councillor White, we should speak further in moving his amendment?
Yes, councillor White, would you like to say anything else?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. I've got a whole speech written now. I was hoping you would come to me and then I think councillor Wittem would like to speak after I have finished.
Okay, off you go.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Reading council declared a climate emergency two years ago. Unfortunately, this year with the pandemic, many council climate-related initiatives have stalled. The schemes in the capital programme look very similar this year to last year. The council needs to redouble its efforts to tackle climate change and for a green recovery. One area that council data identifies which needs more work is private rented and owner occupied housing. Thirty-nine percent of Reading's carbon emissions come from housing. At the same time, over 6,000 of our Reading households live in fuel poverty. This is where people in our communities don't have enough money to heat their home. Over 4,000 homes per year need to be well insulated to achieve the needed reduction in carbon emissions and bills. Most council homes have basic energy efficiency measures installed, such as loft, cavity wall and double glazing. Many private rented and owner occupied properties haven't been well insulated yet. I would just like to underline this point as the purpose of this amendment is to start to bring the private rented and owner occupied accommodation up to the very good level of most council homes. There is no current council scheme that is making a large enough difference to private housing, helping the borough hit the housing insulation target of 4,000 homes per year that as a town we need to hit. The only insulation, the only scheme of any significance to insulate houses in Reading is the Green Homes Fund money the council got, which as well as insulating some council houses, will install measures in around 40 homes in the private sector. With a target of 4,000 homes insulated per year and a reality of less than 100, the Labour group has clearly dropped the ball on this issue. The, this budget amendment seeks to recruit a home energy conservation officer for an initial two-year period to increase the capacity to insulate private rented and owner occupied homes. This would cost approximately £120,000. We recognise that the council's financial situation is worse than at last year's budget, but tackling fuel poverty and cutting carbon emissions should be a greater priority for this council. This money will come from part of the current financial year underspend, which is commonly earmarked to go into reserves. Council officers agree that this is possible without jeopardising the council's finances. With this extra officer capacity, the council would be able to help residents take advantage of grants to get homes insulated. Grants like the local authority FLEX scheme, which in Bracknell is insulating approximately 500 homes per year. Grants like the Green Homes Grant, which residents can apply for. If the Home Energy Efficiency Officer had been in post and had helped just six households access the £10,000 grant for people on low incomes, it would have brought in enough, as much money as the local, into the local economy, as the council would be paying for this post. Having a home energy conservation officer won't get us up to 4,000 homes per year on its own, but it will move us in the right direction. In conclusion, the council is doing a good job of insulating council homes. The challenge is in the private sector. There is government grant money that Reading council should be helping our residents make use of, especially the over 6,000 houses in Reading living unhappily in fuel poverty. Having a home energy conservation officer would help residents access the grant money. It would get more private rented and owner occupied houses insulated. This would tackle fuel poverty, cut carbon emissions and create jobs. Our residents in fuel poverty shouldn't have to choose between heating and eating. Please vote for this budget amendment from the Green Party.
Councillor Wittem. To second.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thirty-nine percent of Reading's carbon emissions come from housing. In Reading, we're not insulating enough houses to tackle the climate emergency. I represent Redlands Board in East Reading, where there are thousands of private rented houses. Large numbers of these houses are in poor condition and the residents inside would benefit from much higher levels of insulation. Having a home energy conservation officer would help residents access the grant money. It would get more private rented and owner occupied houses insulated. This would tackle fuel poverty and cut carbon emissions and create jobs. There's no taxation without decent insulation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Wittem. Next speaker is councillor Brock.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thirty-nine percent of Reading's carbon emissions probably come from my speech tonight. Sorry, I've evidently spent too much time with councillors Page and Ennis. But I, look, I understand the purpose of the amendment brought before us and, you know, I can see what it's seeking to do, but I have to say that £120,000 on the fly, without a robust plan for how this would be successful, is not a good way to amend the budget and to utilise local taxpayers' money because if we don't have a robust plan, if we don't have the funding fully in place to ensure that we can actually bring successful insulation schemes forward, we would be simply utilising local taxpayers' money for the benefit of private homeowners without delivering those genuine benefits for the environment and for rent occupiers as well. So our focus instead should be on securing further external support, securing further funding for insulation schemes. It's something, I think, that the spirit of this amendment is something that we can keep in consideration as we move forward, but it needs to be holistically assessed and approached and so the Labour group will not be supporting this tonight and will be voting against it. I would also add, there is a degree of financial fiction to the way the amendment has been constructed because when we talk about revenue underspend, what we really mean is unspent contingency budgets because the council was prudent in the previous financial year. And those unspent contingency budgets have already been reallocated into contingencies for coming year and into reserves, which as we've spoken about already tonight, are used to fund the budget in 21/22. So not something that we'll support. Appreciate the spirit of it. Sure, it's something that we'll be able to revisit in some way, but it isn't, it doesn't come with a robust plan. So it's something we would have to look at in the round in the future. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brock. Next up is councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We'll not be supporting the amendment. Thanks to the Green Party for your advance notice for this £120,000 officer. My question is to do what? I thought it was either naivety or playing games. I can't work out which way the Green Party go. I mean, I think they should check, they call themselves Green Party, should check on energy efficiency and how grants are accumulated really. It's good that they recognise that council homes on progress. Council homes are spent by the rents. The rents raise, paying for the improvements for the private sector, it would be relying on government grants, not the council tax. The council tax cannot, would not be able to fund £4,000 properties a year to be insulated. Now, I worry about the Green Party because they seem to be giving the Conservatives a free pass, particularly the Conservative government. There's hardly any criticism. I would ask them to check on the Guardian headlines on the 10th of February 2021, when it talked about the government's £1.5 billion government flagship of green grants to housing. To date, 95% set aside to improve homes has been unspent due to bonus in making the grants and paying installers. So my question, I'd like them to answer, is what is this officer going to do that nobody else in the country today has been able to do? Now, they're ending this grant, this great grant that Johnson, the Prime Minister, heralded as a new way, 95% has been unspent. That's not Reading Borough Council's responsibility, that is government's responsibility. What is this council officer going to do to nudge the government to spend more than the 5%? Now, 71 million has been spent, the rest of that one point, whatever it is, I'm not a great mathematician, will go back. It will be unspent and that green grant will end. Read Guardian. And there will now be limited scope. So we'll be spending £120,000 on an officer over two years trying to find grants that don't exist. I would rather they joined in with me, joined in with us to lobby the government that they should be funding private sector houses and ending fuel poverty. The council tax cannot achieve that. And are they really suggesting that tenants who are not on the housing ladder, that have no chance of getting onto the housing ladder, will use their council tax payments for those who have owned their homes? I think you really should take the responsibility. You should look at where the responsibility lies, which is with this national government on their lack of use of the green grant, Homes Initiative, 95% unspent, and lobby them rather than try and glean more money from the council taxpayer to do something that this government should be doing. So I'd like to see what their answers are as far as what the officer would do with non-assisted grants. Thank you. So hence opposing the amendment, but prepared to work with any councillor on the H and L and others to ensure that we try and help as much private sector owners as possible with their energy efficiency. FLEX has happened now already. We're doing quite a bit, but we can't get the green grants fund because it hasn't been spent. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. And next up is councillor Stamford Beale.
Good evening, Mr Mayor. Again, I'd like to say we haven't had sight of this amendment before this evening, so we're going, we will not be supporting it. We would have needed to at least have sight of it and made sure it was a robust plan. As we haven't, we can't support it. And additionally, why should the council taxpayers be helping people who are private landlords improve their properties? You know, that does seem to be something that we should not be doing. It is down to the landlords to increase the energy efficiency of houses and there are, you know, there have been government grants out there for particular parts of Reading. There are different charitable trusts that would provide grants for insulation. And we feel that that's, that's the way it should be done. Very happy to help out on anybody, you know, with any, any projects we want to have, but the Conservative group will not be supporting this amendment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stamford Beale. So finally councillor Davine.
Councillor Davine. Well, I've heard a number of Labour councillors speak and I think they have a problem. It seems I'm focusing on climate change as opposed to financial prudence. And it's actually something of a false economy if we are trying to progress towards a carbon neutrality in the town. It's really, I don't know, I find it difficult to talk about financial prudence when we're actually talking about a very small sum of money, given the overall budgets that we have, of finding 120K over two years to fund an officer or officers to push ahead with what is one of the biggest obstacles to carbon neutrality in the town, which is the issue of private rented accommodation. I'm quite sure that if left to private owners, as Labour and Tory councillors seem to prefer, to do their own thing, there will be absolutely no progress as there has been little up to now in installing insulation and other energy conservation measures on private rented accommodation. So we will be supporting the green motion tonight and shame on the Labour and Tories for not supporting it.
Thank you councillor Davine. Councillor White, would you like to briefly sum up?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. So to sum up, to come back on what this officer would do, we only have to look at the similar post they have in Bracknell and they have been making use of the local authority FLEX scheme for a number of years now. And that scheme is insulating around 500 homes per year. We raised this at last year's budget meeting alongside a large grant pot of money. The budget amendment was defeated, but the council has committed to looking into the local authority FLEX scheme because it is a way to access free government grant money to get houses insulated. It's only small scale loft and cavity wall, that sort of thing, but it's there, Bracknell are doing it. However, it's just sitting on a list and you talk to the sustainability team at the council and they say, oh, it's housing should be taking this forward because obviously the sustainability team is very small these days and housing just don't have the capacity to be working on this. So there are, there's no shortage of ideas out there and work that could be done. It's a capacity problem and there just isn't the capacity in the housing team or the sustainability team to take this work forward. And that is why nothing is being done. Tiny amounts of bit of work are being done compared to the scale of what's needed. Councillor Ennis talked about the Green Homes Grant scheme being rubbish and I totally agree. It is a chaotic government scheme. Installers are hard to find, there's not many of them, the timescales are unworkable, but, but it's a scheme that's there and you've got to, you've got to take advantage of what's there. Had we had some capacities to support residents and promote the scheme, it would have got some houses insulated, solid wall insulation. It's very expensive and hard for people to do. We would have made some progress. And I totally accept what councillor Ennis says. The government needs to do far, far more than it's doing at the moment, but we as a council need to be taking advantage of the opportunities as they present themselves. We need to be agile and to do that, we need to have some capacity, which is what we're lacking at the moment. Councillor Stamford Beale, sorry that you didn't get the amendment, but I did send it through to your leader and deputy leader yesterday and I did get an email back saying thank you. So I'm not quite sure what happened there, but yeah, I understand you not wanting to support something that you've only just seen. So to sum up, we think that having a home energy conservation officer would help residents access the grant money that's there. It would get more private rented and owner occupied houses insulated. This would tackle fuel poverty, cut carbon emissions and create jobs. It's disappointing that Labour councillors are rejecting this green recovery jobs-led approach. However, if the Labour group is going to oppose this budget amendment, then they need to come up with a plan to get significantly more houses per year insulated as soon as possible. And maybe their plan is just cross their fingers and hope the government delivers something. I'm not massively hopeful that the government is going to deliver the right thing. I think we need to take our own destiny in our hands and do what we can. So I'd like to see the Labour group bring a report forward on what other, other action the council can take and will take to get more private rented sector homes and owner occupied homes insulated up to the high standard that we have for council housing. We'll keep working on this. Our residents in fuel poverty shouldn't have to choose between heating and eating. I urge councillors to support this amendment.
So thank you very much councillor White. So hopefully we've heard from spokesmen for all four groups indicating how their groups plan to vote. On the basis of that, I think we'll do it by act. On the basis of that, I think we'll do it by acclamation again. So please unmute yourselves now. Those councillors for the amendment, please say now if they're for it. That's unhelpful guys because I will have to do a full roll call if we can't be sure. So I think we've got, I know who's voting for, who's voting against the amendment? Okay, okay, again, again. So thank you very much. So I think we can deduce from that that the amendment is not carried. I should ask, sorry, before I ask, does any councillor wishes to dissent from their group's position and vote in a different way? No. Okay. So I think as I say, we discern from that, that the amendment is not carried. In which case we return to the main substantive motion. At the time councillor White was speaking, could officers indicate how much time he has left to speak, please?
Councillor White's finished his speech, I believe, for Mr Mayor and it's councillor Davine's turn next.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that then councillor Davine, you're on.
Thank you. Can I start also by extending our thanks to the council staff for all their efforts during the pandemic crisis? We've seen an awful lot of people working very hard and they deserve our thanks. I'd also like to extend our condolences to those who sadly passed away as a result of this pandemic crisis in, in our town. On the issue of the budgets, I think there is an overall problem with government grants that fail to provide the necessary funding to local government through everything that it wants to do or even that it needs to do. We know all about, you will have heard me mention rather too often before about the crisis in affordable housing. And it's a problem that we can only get through very slowly in Reading. And I'm sure councillor Ennis is making a good job of it as anybody. But we cannot build enough, quick enough to provide a solution to what is a housing crisis without more government support. And it's typical of this government that we revise on handing out money, not as simple grants, but as grants that we need to compete for in some competition with other councils for grants that aren't always that generous. The overall effect of the Tory government has been to see local services cut and staff not paid a reasonable compensation that keeps pace with inflation. Sadly, the effects of this, sorry, I'll start that again. Sadly, this affects workers at the bottom of the pile and the bottom of the pay scale, whilst not immediately seriously affecting those nearer the top. And I think when all is said and done, we are not being fair as a nation to some of the people that have worked hardest for us, for our local communities. And indeed that would extend to the NHS as well, I'm sure. The, the one idea I heard from the Tories of not accepting the 3% ASC funding seems to be bizarre when that whole service has been underfunded and shortchanged for decades. So that's quite disappointing to hear that they won't be supporting that particular item. I think we are a regime where we need to tackle climate change. I've noticed there's an awful lot of good things happening in budgets and in the programme. And the investments in renewable energy and climate change are all well and good. But there are a number of things that we can and should be doing to tackle climate change. We are, we are sadly at the moment failing to do so. And one of them we've just talked about, which is the problem of insulating thousands of old Victorian and Georgian terraced properties that are in this town, that are in private rental, that are in private landlords' hands. And it is proving almost impossible to get them interested in insulation, for example. The second area I want to bring to people's attention, that is an item that does indeed tackle climate change or goes some way towards tackling climate change is tree planting. And I would like to introduce an amendment at this stage, if I may, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much councillor Davine. Do you have a second after your amendment?
I do councillor O'Connell.
To second and reserve my rights.
We do that super, we have you with us now because I wasn't sure. Okay, that's great. So you're going to reserve your rights. So do you want to speak to your amendment now councillor Davine or do you just want to have it debated?
I want to speak to it as well, if I may.
So you speak to it, you've got a maximum of five minutes on the amendment.
Thank you. This issue of tree planting is something that we recognise that they bring many benefits to our urban landscape. Breaking up otherwise unappealing town vistas of brick, concrete and glass. They provide habitats for all sorts of animals and birds and they do seem to have a calming effect on many people. And most importantly, they are key drivers in sucking carbon dioxide out of our polluted atmosphere. There are of course a number of drawbacks to planting more trees. They take a long time to grow, have their roots restricted or need to restrict in near existing buildings. They're easily vandalised when young and there's a problem of dropping leaves in autumn. Nevertheless, the benefits of planting more trees are far outweighing the drawbacks. And the positive contribution of trees to reducing the levels of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere is widely acknowledged. And that's why we are proposing this amendment, which will give a significant boost to the number of trees in our town. The amendment, as you've seen, is it visible yet on screen? I can't see it from here.
Yeah, we can still see it.
The amendment is to provide an extra £150,000 for tree planting in the coming financial year, 21, 22. And that would include money for a new bouncer and towing vehicle. Because when these trees are young, they need looking after and watering. So that's why there's an even bigger sum in the first year. And then further sums of extra £50,000 in following years. This isn't an enormous amount of money, but it can have a large effect. And that's why we are indeed proposing it. And we would like to get this amendment accepted in order to order trees for the next tree planting season. Because we missed this year's basically, and the next tree planting season in January to March next year. So the idea is that we have a big boost. And I'm glad to hear that actually we've had a rather generous present from Japan of quite a few hundred cherry trees, which is all well and good, but we can do much more indeed with our own money. And I hope that the annual sum of £50,000 in the budgets that was already there can be enlarged considerably. And in fact, the original budget was the result of a Lib Dem motion, which many years ago, some people may have remembered Jane Goodall introducing that item in a budget debate many moons ago. But given the time, it takes the trees to grow and the need to cut our overall carbon deficit by 2030. We do need a big push to plant more trees now because as you realise, they take a number of years to grow and mature. Hence this simple amendment this evening, which we hope you will support. And I also like to point out that we are not the only council that plants trees. I did read the other day that Portsmouth had managed to plant something like 1,400 trees in the current financial year. Things are possible and I'd like to see Reading with many more trees all over the place. So please do support our amendment.
Councillor Davine, so I think councillor O'Connell is seconding, reserving her right. So we have four, five, six other speakers. Councillor Brock first.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I think, you know, we could put in any sum of money into the budget for tree planting and councillor Davine would say double it. I mean, he's told us tonight that it's okay to spend hundreds of thousands of pounds without a plan. We won't be supporting this this evening. Of course, the goal is admirable. We share the goal to plant more trees around the town and we will be planting more trees around the town. But let's spend the budget we've already allocated acknowledging some of the pressures that we have in this highly dense urban area to get the trees planted. And when we've succeeded in that, as I'm sure we will, we'll look to extend the budget then. But there's no point just putting random numbers into the budget at the current stage because they're not going to deliver tree planting more quickly than what we already have. So it's a pointless amendment in, in this case, and we won't be supporting it from the Labour group. Thank you.
Councillor Brock, councillor Stamford Beale.
Thank you very much. Again, Conservative group will not be supporting this. We haven't had a briefing on it as to what councillor Davine wanted to achieve with this. And he might like to know that actually we have done quite a lot of tree planting in Reading. Not only through council funding, but also through the conservation volunteers who've had a three and a half year project that councillor Grasshough, myself and councillor Rowlands have all taken part in to plant trees across Reading as part of the amelioration of network rails development in the town. So we have planted lots and lots of trees. Personally, I've been out tree planting Buxbossum and Clayfield Cops. They've also planted trees in other parts of the town as well. So this is already going on. I do agree that having a bouncer so that you can water the trees that you've planted so they survive. You know, if we have a very hot summer again, it's, it's very important. But not only do you need to buy the equipment, you'd need to have an appropriate trained volunteer or a member of staff who could use it. So I think it's very unlikely you'd be able to get that for that sum. And as councillor Brock's already explained, you know, we don't have an underspend. Those monies have already been allocated. So I'm afraid tonight councillor Davine, the Conservative group will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Beale, next we have councillor Josh Williams.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Even without prior notice, I'm able to read and understand this one. And the Green group are happy to support this amendment to the budget. I think councillor Brock is maybe a little confused. There is a tree plan, Reading Borough Council has a tree plan, it exists. It states that we will be planting 3,000 trees in the next decade. Those trees cost money. They cost anywhere from £300 up per individual tree, well over £1,000 each if you need a tree pit. And to get the right trees in the right place, you do need tree pits. So there's only one way to get to that target of 3,000 trees in the next decade and that's to invest. You can do the, you can do the sums, £50,000 a year does not get you to 3,000 new trees. Especially when we consider that tens of trees are lost every year through felling. So we're happy to support councillor Davine's motion. This council seems to have a sort of a blind spot when it comes to the climate emergency they declared. So hopefully, even though they've declared they'll be voting against it, they will look at this again. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up comes councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And yes, I, I note that we will not be supporting this motion. However, I do want to thank councillor Davine for his continued interest and support of trees and the importance that they play with our climate strategy. He made a similar motion last year. But, but this is something that has to be very much of a planned situation. And I would like to highlight that within the budget constraints that we have this year and the 50K that we have allocated, we are meeting the goals that we need to be meeting. Last night I had the privilege of signing off the council's new tree strategy, which councillor Williams quoted does include planting 3,000 trees by 2030. It also has a goal of increasing our town's tree canopy cover by 25% by 2030. It does mean we have to get planting. But let me tell you and highlight to you what we've done with the 50,000K this year. For, for starters, we have increased the tree planting that we normally do, which has normally been running around 200. And I'm saying 200 actual standard trees that are, are in the ground to last to 351 trees this year, working with the wonderful Reading Tree Wardens and other wonderful volunteer organisations. If you do the math, 351 times 10 is going to put us well over 3,000. And that is not even with examining the possibilities that we have in front of us to work further with other organisations, to work on other grant funding opportunities and to also look at the incredible work that we're doing within our highway strategy and department. Wherein whilst we're, we're improving our pavements and our roads, we are looking at where we can put in extra trees. So I would, I would beg to defer that we are actually sticking to a budget and making the numbers happen that we have set out in our tree strategy. I love it when I hear the big numbers like Portsmouth has planted 1,400 trees. And, and I was even in a meeting a few months ago, or no, actually just last month, pardon me, where Nottingham had planted 3,000 trees in December. These are whips. These are the things that councillor Stamford Beale and councillor Grasshough and I go out and plant. And they do have a chance, some of them of survival. But that is a cheap way of actually delivering trees. And what I'm talking about here are real trees and we will continue to look at that possibility. But for now, we're in the middle of a situation with our budget wherein we need to work and maximise the ability that we've got. And with this 50K that we have allocated, we have delivered this year and we will deliver next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you Karen Rowland. So next we go to councillor O'Connell, who's going to second the motion, ah, but the amendment, sorry.
Hi, thank you. Okay, when you look at the sums of money that this council is responsible for on behalf of Reading residents, I think our proposal is actually quite modest in financial terms. But what's not modest is the loud signal that it sends out about our often mentioned commitment to being carbon neutral in Reading by 2030. It's great that this council was one of the first to acknowledge that we're in the midst of a climate emergency. And that I will be the first to praise for the positive steps that have already been made in tackling it. But as the motion earlier made by the Greens this evening highlights, there is a lot more that we can do and we must do. The evidence is building up. And I'm thinking here about the flooding that affected Caversham over recent weeks and the data that shows that events like these are going to become more frequent and more severe. We simply can't afford to not take every single opportunity to mitigate our carbon use. Being on target for being carbon neutral by 2030 is great. But being ambitious and bringing about that goal even sooner is better. Planting these trees, the trees that Ricky and I proposed, the Lib Dems proposed, will soak up and trap CO2. It'll help to slow down, on our own we can't stop it, but it'll help to slow down the increase in global temperatures. But the benefits don't stop there. It would help to clear up the harmful particulates from traffic that have been proven now to damage the health and even on occasions to kill young people. We know that Reading has some of the worst pollution hotspots in Berkshire. And I for one would like to see that situation change. I would like us to be leading on a greener, cleaner town. But that's not all. I mean, there's also the mental health benefits that increase the green coverage bring about to our residents. So again, I got off of a government website, the evidence that good quality natural landscape in urban areas can affect how people feel. It reduces our stress and our sadness. It lifts the mood and it makes It lifts the mood and it makes us feel better. After the year that we have all been through, I can't think of a better way of showing Reading's residents that their council care about all aspects of their health and the environment that they live in. There are so many good reasons why my fellow councillors should agree to this minor amendment in the budget. I honestly can't see why the Labour Group wouldn't agree to support this. I know you won't, but to me, it just doesn't make any sense when we are sitting on a planet that is getting hotter day by day, year by year, and we're feeling those impacts in our town. Our residents are going to see that water lapping up against their doors in a few years' time. These trees could help to mitigate that, just as the Greens' proposal for insulation would also help mitigate that. I'm going to keep asking those who hold the power here in Reading to please, please take our climate emergency seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Connell. So councillor Davine, would you just like to shortly sum up your amendment?
Well, very briefly, this is all about preferring to tackle climate change over the financial prudence of the Labour administration. I say prudence, Gordon Brown talked about prudence and look what happened to him. I really, there's not much to add. The other two big parties are clearly set against the idea of planting more trees and the town is going to miss out as a result. Nevertheless, I commend the amendment and hope that some people at least will find a cause that they can support.
Very much, councillor Davine. So we're then moved to a vote on the amendment. And once again, helpfully, we've had speakers from all the parties, so we've got a fair indication of how the groups will vote. So once again, I'll do it on a voice. People would exercise great maturity if they would and just shout out once we have a fair indication, the public can hear fairly clearly the level of support for or against the amendment. So those in favour of the amendment, please now indicate by saying four.
Oh.
Thank you, councillor White. Against the amendment, please indicate now.
Against.
I think on the voice of voices, we have a clear majority against the amendment. So I'm afraid to councillor Davine, your amendment isn't carried, so therefore we revert back to the substantive motion. Again, officers, can you just tell me how much longer councillor Davine has to speak?
I've got nothing further to add on the main amendment, the main motion, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Mr Mayor, we've exhausted all the group leaders now, so we're open to other councillors to speak for up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr Graham. Exactly that. I've got a long list, so guys, you might sort of make your main points as quick as you can. And as Mr Graham says, you've got a maximum of five minutes and we'll indicate four that you've got a minute left. First up then, please, is councillor Graham Hoskin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I get your message loud and clear. And in fact, I've had a few WhatsApp messages from colleagues asking me to be swift, so I'll attempt to do so. I'm going to speak leisure centres and drugs and alcohol, which demonstrate the expanse of my brief. But briefly, I want to come back to councillor Jeanette Skeets, who's been a councillor for us, you know, for the whole of my time as a councillor, obviously before that. And I'm really sort of disappointed with her contribution. She is basically asking us to believe that councils across the country are not suffering financial hardship, are not suffering from underfunding as a result of the COVID pandemic. I mean, this is actually something that's a matter of record, as a matter of local record. In fact, her Conservative council colleagues up and down the land are also complaining of. The Local Government Association, which is of course Conservative-led, estimates that councils are around £1.1 billion out of pocket as a result of COVID expenses and lack of government funding, and that could rise to £2.2 billion by the end of this financial year. And of course, it's why numerous councils, both Labour, Conservative, and I'm sure, you know, others as well, are currently looking to see whether they're going bankrupt and looking for government for support. So it is actually just absolute nonsense. I guess what is happening is that the Conservative group are trying to basically put reality up to one side in terms of dealing with that underfunding, in terms of dealing with the challenges ahead of us, and are simply looking for, you know, a nice cheap electoral points to put on their leaflets. And that's a shame for councillor Skeets, because councillor Skeets, I well know, is here for public service and for the people of Reading. So it's a shame that she didn't think about that in terms of this debate and what's important for the people of Reading in terms of the services that we provide. And she sort of summed it up, I rather, you know, I thought unfortunately, to councillor Brock, which was, apart as she's concerned, the resident residents can stick it because we won and therefore the Tories can do what they like, which is an extraordinary state of affairs, and I hope she reconsideres that. Councillor White did touch upon public health briefly and talk about drugs and alcohol services. You know, councillor White, as you know, many of my colleagues will imagine, is of course utterly wrong. The saving that's outlined within this budget, which is actually, I think councillor White hopefully has even been briefed, he should have asked for a briefing, is around the savings, efficiency savings we believe that we can make by going into a wider commissioning with our Westbuck and Wokingham colleagues and driving out more cost effectiveness as a result. We actually hope that through this process, we will improve services. They may well, they will change, but they can be improved and we can get better outcomes. I think the quality impact assessment that he's probably looked at has to have a best case scenario, so worst case scenario. But actually, we're hoping to improve and actually provide better services as a result of working together with other councils. And I think, you know, most people, most residents would agree that that is by far the best way to approach the lack of funding for public health services. And I would like, a lot of people probably do not understand that public health services, as well as being cut and cut and cut again by the Tory governments, apparently, you know, Boris Johnson says we're beyond the age of austerity, we know that's not the case because of the budget we're having to fill today. But unbelievably, bearing in mind the year that we have had, the one thing you would think we would have learnt from a year of the pandemic, you know, taking hold in our country is the importance of public health. And what are the Conservative government doing? Are they going to increase funding for public health? No, they're not. And in fact, they have yet to outline their public health grant. We believe that it will be maintained at the same level, and in fact, a real terms grant cut. And that is the challenge that we're facing. I really commend council officers for coming forward with a public health element to this, which maintains services and maintains what we deliver on the ground. It's no short of an astounding achievement. I'd also like to thank colleagues and council officers for their commitment to sport and leisure services in Reading. In a time where the council leisure centres around the country are being closed, there's fears of them not being road open after lockdown, this council's commitment to sport and leisure is there, written in the budget, to drive forward in delivering the best leisure facilities and the best swimming pools that Reading has ever had. That's how we're, you know, taking on the challenges ahead of us with real ambition. I can see my time is up. I tried to be swift, I had a few things to say. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hoskin. Next up is councillor Barnet Ward.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The past year has been a uniquely challenging one for Reading and this council, but even in the darkest days of the pandemic, there has been so much to be proud of in our neighbourhoods and communities. At the start of the first lockdown, this council partnered with Reading's fantastic voluntary sector to establish the One Reading Hub. Council staff worked alongside voluntary sector staff and hundreds of volunteers, many of whom were volunteering in their communities for the first time, to make sure our most vulnerable residents had food, medicine, and a regular reminder that their community cares about them. Charities and community organisations across our town set up new services in the blink of an eye, adapting and re-adapting as the rules change, and this council has been with them every step of the way, funding, advising, working alongside them, and always celebrating the fantastic vital work being done. This year has changed how we all think about our communities. Neighbours no longer able to socialise in the way they used to have set up WhatsApp groups, held socially distant street parties, waved from doorsteps as they clapped for carers. The time at home has put pressure on council services in a way we could not have imagined when we met to consider last year's budget. We're seeing more reports of antisocial behaviour and violent crime. This council is working with the police to identify the causes of these rises, bringing forward a new antisocial behaviour policy and broadening the reach of our safer neighbourhood forums to work with our residents and our police force to keep everyone safe. This past year has given our residents a new appreciation for our council officers and the fantastic work they do. In a time when much of the world stood still, our staff kept going. When many commercial operators suspended operations, our trade waste service kept going, serving essential businesses and organisations. Our statutory household waste services kept going, never missing a single day. We had a brief suspension of the green waste collection at the start of lockdown one, but it got back up and running after a month, and we have maintained those collections. We worked with RE3 to open our household waste centre in a COVID-secure way and now have a flexible booking system that many of our residents tell us they prefer to the way it used to operate. And we haven't just kept going with existing services. This council's commitment to tackling the climate emergency and improving our recycling rate means that despite the pandemic, we successfully launched our new food waste collection this month. 59,000 properties across the borough are now receiving this service. By the end of the next financial year, it will be 73,000. Already, hundreds of tonnes of food waste have been diverted from landfill where they would have released harmful greenhouse gases to a zero-waste process producing electricity and fertiliser, not only saving the planet but saving money. We're investing in our neighbourhoods by tackling fly tipping. Our recycling enforcement team now have mobile CCTV cameras and use these. Residents love Clean Reading Reports and good old investigative work to issue an average of over 35 fly tipping fixed penalty notices a month. And we've also secured 26 successful prosecutions for environmental crimes to date, with more to come. Reading is a town, and this is a council, that has not just kept going through this last year, but it is also investing and building in the future. This budget looks to the future as well as securing our present, the future of our neighbourhoods, the future of our communities, the future of our planet. I commend this budget to the council and I urge all present to support it.
Councillor Barnet Ward, next one up is councillor Ashley Pearce.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to start echoing the thoughts of our leader Jason Brock earlier in thanking all school staff from the top, from our heads down to people keeping the kitchens going every day and everyone in between for the remarkable job they've done in the last year of keeping pupils educated, whether it be in person or remotely, and the extra burden of work this has placed on them, and how badly they've been let down by the Department for Education across the year, be it free school meals over the holidays, the delivery of laptops to our disadvantaged students, the bungling of wider opening of schools, testing pupils. All of these things have been from a national level done very, very poorly, but been picked up at a local level and run with it and run far more efficiently. Just last month, the School Teachers' Pay Review Body has said they're going to reward our hard-working school staff after all their thanks with a pay cut this year, which is the usual Conservative way of thanking education staff for their efforts. In education, our focus as a council is an increase in school capacity. I mentioned earlier in my answer the SEN provision that we will be presiding over, our new school alongside Wokingham, the relocation and rebuilding of Hamilton School, our two new ASC units, and an increase in capacity at the avenue. As well as that, many existing school buildings will be invested in as part of our heating and electrical programme, helping with our sustainability and environmental goals. Green Park School opened its doors last year in South Reading, and the heights will move to its new permanent site later this year, which I know will be a relief to many. Raniket School will be rebuilt and we will soon have a new secondary school on Richfield Avenue to increase our capacity of schools. I'm proud that despite these trying times, we're able to invest in education in Reading and at a local level, we will always put education as a priority, even if the Department for Education may not.
Brock finished by councillor Pearce. Next, please, is councillor Vis Terry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In speaking in support of this budget, I welcome the opportunity to report that after a positive Ofsted inspection in 2019, the Department for Education recently agreed to take children's services out of intervention. This is an incredible achievement in a short space of time and a reflection of the hard work of all staff at all levels in Brighter Futures for Children and within the council. I must also put on record my thanks to all the organisations in Reading, who in working together as the One Reading Children and Young People Partnership have contributed to this success. It is all the more remarkable, given that this has been achieved during the COVID-19 pandemic. The impact of the changes to the lives of children and young people as a result of the pandemic in terms of health and wellbeing, social development and safeguarding are not fully known, but there will most likely be more pressures on services to come. But I know that Brighter Futures for Children, having managed so well so far, will be up to that challenge and will do all it can to support the recovery of our children and young people over the coming months and years. I know that children's services across the country are under significant pressures financially, so I commend Brighter Futures for Children for the work it has done to improve its efficiency and reduce costs. Children's Services has often overspent its budget, although recently this has been reducing. And I'm pleased to say that this year it is expecting to come in or close to budget, which obviously supports strengthening the resilience of the council's own budget despite the cuts we have to make. The leader already made reference to the council is making funding available to Brighter Futures to continue its transformation work and embedding this in its day-to-day working. We're looking to improve particularly the early health services so that we can support children and families to not go into care and actually to stay living at home and safely at home. So thank you, Mr Mayor. I support this budget.
Thank you, councillor Terry. Next is councillor Karen Rowland. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr Mayor. The cultural sector relies on audiences to survive and to achieve income, a critical element that, as we all observed, virtually evaporated this year for that sector. As lead councillor for Culture, Heritage and Recreation, this year has been a challenge, never before and hopefully never again, while delivering the good stuff for Reading be quite so challenging. And I would like to extend my deepest thanks to our officers for their ingenuity, innovation and incredible dedication and hard work. Thus, the budget proposals for our cultural services area are about stemming losses by reducing overhead service costs, reprofiling incomes and proposing new income streams so that our services can be back in full force into the future. But for now, this is a year that will still be very focused on recovery for this difficult issue in this sector. I'd still like to take the opportunity to highlight just a few of the incredible achievements in the area. With audiences gone, we wasted no time in going to find them. The natural answer was digital and Reading Culture Live was born. It was born as a stop-gap online platform to enable Reading's cultural community a place to showcase their talents. It was soon noted, however, that it delivered real staying power in terms far beyond COVID-19. We are now looking to how we can bring Reading culture live along with What's On Reading into the future. The Hexagon, within 10 days of the lockdown, became the one Reading community hub, delivering 1,200 meals during the first lockdown. Briefly, the Hex was back this year and served a greatly reduced audience but with refreshments brought straight to your seat. South Street mounted a well-acclaimed play about the COVID-19 experience behind closed doors, which was briefly in performance and is now on our pay-per-view platform. It should be noted that because of South Street's physical space, the South Street brand is moving temporarily to the larger Hexagon to find new audiences until they can return home. Reading Museum expanded their digital offer to schools, downloaded over 50,000 times their new digital online services. and their Windrush exhibition was singled out in Arts Council Reading's, I'm sorry, Art Council England's National Roundup. Our libraries ensured essential computer services were available to some of Reading's most vulnerable and now they have a formidable online services with over 5,000 hits per month. Our teams continue to be innovative. The fabulous Twilight Trail this year is evidence of that and evidence of us being able to come back and our celebrations for the 900th anniversary of Reading point the way forward. Reading also turned to our parks and outer spaces with full force this year for exercise, wellbeing and sanity. And I would like to thank the team that has kept those areas tended to and accessible throughout the year. This, however, has come with further maintenance cost implications for that department. The rewilding of many of our verges across the town has delivered beauty and tackled biodiversity in a built-up urban town and found wide appreciation across Reading's residents. We have proposed budgeting to continue to expand that next year. Our parks have remained open with guidelines and have joined some of their greatest use ever. Reading's rewilding has increased our biodiversity outreach into our open spaces. We've also been able to refurbish playgrounds and we are continuing to provide greater accessibility to those areas. As I enumerated earlier, our tree planting is something that we take very seriously. Thank you. I will commit to look to expand the trees that we are able to plant and achieve these goals. In summation, budget challenges will be formidable for this area, but the key elements for this portfolio are still in line with our labour values of ensuring better accessibility for all of our residents in our parks and playgrounds and delivering critical recovery for our cultural services within budget guidelines, offerings that provide for and serve our wonderfully diverse population that is Reading's greatest asset. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rowland. So next up is councillor Stamford Beale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to start by echoing the thanks to all council officers that have previously been stated and also condolences to the bereaved. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all our Blue Light partners, Thames Valley Police, Royal Berkshire Fire and Rescue and the ambulance service who have worked so hard to assist our residents during the pandemic and also our colleagues in health at the Royal Berkshire Hospital and the Berkshire Healthcare Trust and CAMHS who have looked after our residents' health and their mental health needs as well. They've gone above and beyond during the pandemic. Fire rescue have helped in the logistics to set up the mass vaccination at the Middaelski Stadium this week so that our GPs can focus back on treating patients. I think we've heard many a time from the chief medical officer that the only way out of the pandemic is a vaccine. When we first went into national lockdown, almost a year ago now, the government was quick to react with setting funding up for local authorities as they faced the double whammy of increased costs and a reduction in income from parking fees, bus lane fines and venue hire, et cetera. Nationally, the government gave money for PPE to improve infection control, funds to maintain leisure facilities, funds to reopen High Street, funds to provide council tax relief for vulnerable households and the Chancellor set up the furlough scheme in a very short space of time to protect jobs and the Borough Council took advantage of this scheme. Funds were given to support businesses and Reading providing business grants to many, many businesses to help them stay afloat when we all had to stay at home. Business has been hit hard by the pandemic and so have many of our residents, particularly those who worked in hospitality and the retail sector. We cannot support the budget tonight as it is presented as it includes a rise of 4.99% this year, next year and the year after. We cannot expect our residents to pay an increase in council tax at this level for the next three years as they've been hit so hard by the economic impact of Covid-19. I think that the Labour administration should be looking at reducing their spending. In particular, we were concerned about how the budget includes £6 million on pay rises. Why? We have increased automation and the move to self-service, so surely these costs should be coming down, not increasing. Thank you.
Stamford Beale, next is councillor Emerson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to comment that it has been an unprecedented year, as other councillors have said before me this evening, and I, like many others, would like to take the opportunity to pass my thanks to staff across the organisation for their efforts in keeping business as usual and supporting residents across the town in this really difficult time. My particular thanks to the executive director of resources, Jackie Yates, whom I've liaised with throughout the year and I know works tirelessly day-to-day and indeed in proposing the budget we are considering tonight, as well as all the officers within the portfolio. Given the unprecedented nature of this year, I'm even prouder that we are able to bring forward a balanced and ambitious budget for Reading. Mr Mayor, before I proceed to comment on my portfolio and give a whistle-stop tour as other councillors have this evening, I'd like to provide clarification to councillor White regarding the proposed business case in terms of the terms and conditions business case proposed. First of all, I'd like to rebut the claims of secret business cases. I mean, a proposal so secret as councillor White bizarrely claims that the leader had it prominently within his own speech tonight. I do not recall any request from Green councillors to make such business cases public and given councillor White length of service and the fact that these business cases are never part of the budget papers, I would suggest he should have brought this up sooner. However, the council has confirmed that these can be published and going forward, it is something the council can consider in terms of attaching to the budget. The narrative and options appraisal that was mentioned by councillor White this evening is written by officers and not councillors. Officers are obviously transparent in providing details so that councillors can make informed decisions. It is just an officer narrative, so other accusations regarding policy were not appropriate this evening. Moving to the substantive of the proposal in the business case, the allowance policy for which most allowances that the council derive from has not been reviewed or indeed updated for the past 10 years, and I think it is right that we do review this. Councillor White also failed to mention the additional annual leave and healthcare cash plan scheme as proposed within the business case. And whilst I assume councillor White supports these, I would like to put my thanks to officers for liaison with staff across the council and putting these forward so that staff can be assured that they work for the best employer in the town. I therefore put on record my thanks for this and my support for those elements of the business case. As ever, there will be a process with the trade unions and it is not proposed tonight that any re-engagement will take place with staff. It is merely an officer narrative. The council will continue to progress its status as the best employer in the town and this means engaging with staff and it means introducing things such as increased annual leave entitlement and further benefits for the council, as well as flexible working. Mr Mayor, I also note that councillor White did not propose another £326,000 revenue saving that would be required to balance the budget tonight, should this be removed. Anyway, moving on to the corporate and consumer portfolio, I'd like to flag a few budget proposals this evening. Firstly, it is absolutely clear that the council's ICT and digital agenda is ambitious. We're currently in the process of moving away from our singular outsourced provider to multi-suppliers with a transition by the end of March. This will give staff more tools to perform their day-to-day job and enable quicker and better outcomes for our residents, which I really support. And I'm looking forward to the digital strategy coming forward later in this year for councillors to consider. The budget tonight also proposes the extension of the already-approved customer service strategy, delivering 590k thousand savings in the next three years. It will look at how we liaise with our customers, consider the reception offer that we currently provide and introduce better payment systems, as well as upgrade the website functionality. Though small terms, small numbers rather, in terms of the budget, I would also like to mention the registration and bereavement team which falls under the portfolio. Clearly, they have experienced really great hardship this year in terms of the pandemic situation. In this budget, they are proposing additional service proposals for residents which would not only just bring in a small income for the council, but also offer more choice to our residents. Moving on to the procurement service, a proposal contained within the budget refers to the training of staff across the organisation in aid in to implement a hub-and-spokes model whereby staff across the organisation will engage with their contracts within their service area and it's a really great area where people are able to get involved with the social value policy that's just been implemented and make sure that they can derive social value through all our contracts. I would like to finish with reference to the revenue and benefits team. The leader of the council referred to the grants that have been handed out by the council throughout the pandemic and clearly the team have worked on the frontline to support people who are struggling, dispatching over £80 million in grants to businesses and liaison with all of our council tax support, sorry, our council tax support scheme as well. Clearly, collection is still a concern and it will be for the rest of the year and perhaps the year after that and a lot of councils have really faced hardship in terms of drops in their collection. However, as councillors will know through the reports that come through, the Reading collection rate remains stable and this is to the credit of the team who work tirelessly to engage with residents on a one-on-one basis when they're struggling and set up any arrangements as per the council tax protocol from citizens' advice. And I'm really grateful to the team's efforts to make sure that we continue to uphold our collection rate. And indeed, we've seen the lowest drop in Berkshire in recent months, which is really quite impressive in the current circumstances. As well, this budget proposal's a £70 grant.
Are you just winding up? So I think you've had over your five minutes. Thank you.
This budget also proposes a one-off £70 grant for residents of council tax, which I wholeheartedly support. Mr Mayor, my portfolio is huge and that's why I've gone over the time because there's too much that can be discussed and I apologise for that. But I'd just like to give my thanks to all the staff across the council for making this ambitious budget possible.
Councillor Emerson, next up is councillor Ballsden.
Oh God. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking all staff in Reading's Adult Social Care team, where at the best of times, roles are highly demanding. Over the last 12 months, the pandemic has put unprecedented strains on everyone. Staff have had to contend not only with their frontline jobs, but also their personal challenges in their own homes. It is crucial that they know councillors recognise and appreciate their hard work. So again, on behalf of my Conservative colleagues, I'd like to thank them. I'm grateful that councillor Brock acknowledged the government's financial support this last year. Before continuing with my speech, I'd like to come back on councillor Jones's speech. His accusations against the government for not yet having delivered on the promise to fix adult social care, a problem that previous governments for decades have been unable to do, is silly political gesturing. We have been living through the worst worldwide crisis seen in our lifetime. What matters to Reading's residents is for adults with special needs and those who are vulnerable to receive excellent, kind and timely care. The government's swift rollout of the vaccine has been a game-changer, bringing welcome optimism for the future. I'd like to talk about some new provisions I feel are needed, as well as areas that need a greater focus. As ever, early preventative care to minimise the demand for crisis care is key. Continuity of staffing continues to be an issue. The council needs to minimise its dependence on agency staff to achieve the continuity of staffing whilst using the budget as efficiently as possible to provide the care residents deserve. More occupational therapists need to be recruited. I welcome the fact that training has been opened up in Reading, which should help with this. Despite care pressures have increased over the last year, it's very important that the council ensures carers get the respite care they need to avoid crisis cases and all the distress and expense entailed. Young adults with undiagnosed special needs support is needed where family support is lacking, for example, in helping with securing tenancies. It would be good to have an assessment place for younger adults, like the assessment flat that exists for extra-care special housing. Extra-care housing for younger vulnerable adults is needed to prevent future crisis care being needed by providing security and keeping them safe. Transitions from children's to adult social care, these need to be smoother. Young adults should not feel a big drop-off in support and subsequent drop-off in their quality of life. Ensuring sufficient staffing is available to deal with the rate of referrals is important. As is reducing the pressure on social workers, wherever their workload can be handled by support workers, like for example, helping furnish accommodation a resident is being moved into or clearing rotten food out of the fridge and getting emergency supplies in, this should be achieved. To conclude, Mr Mayor, in order for Reading Borough Council to provide residents with these improvements, a collaborative approach with other local authorities and also at a councillor level needs to really be embedded. In addition, there needs to be proper transparency on how all funding is spent. Councillors should be able to scrutinise how the adult social care precept is spent so there is no way for this ring-fenced money to be used elsewhere to fill holes in Labour's budget. As my colleagues have already said, Conservatives will be voting against this budget. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ballsden. Next up is councillor Simon Robinson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, I'd like to start off by acknowledging and paying tribute to the great work done by the Director of Children's Services and her team at Brighter Futures for Children, as well as to our lead councillors, Liz Terry and Ashley Pearce, and all our schools, officers, heads, teachers, teaching assistants and all those involved in looking after our children. On the 8th of May, as you've already heard, as alluded to by councillor Brock and Liz Terry, a press release came out marking a significant milestone, advising that our children's services had at long last been taken out of government intervention and the special measures applied following a damning Ofsted report back in 2016 when we were rated inadequate. So reaching this milestone is truly fantastic and much welcome news and shows the well-deserved recognition of the great work and dedication to bring the needed improvements over the last five years and is made even more impressive, given the tough and unprecedented conditions we have all faced over the last year during the Covid-19 pandemic. As we all know and appreciate, children's services is one of the more significant recipients of funding from the budget and rightly so. However, I'm going to highlight one area which does have a very significant impact on the budget and that is in finding suitable placements for our children in care. We, as in most other authorities, suffer from a severe shortage of local placements that we can use and thus a number of our children are sadly placed outside of our area. Clearly, in most cases, this is not an ideal situation for both the child and his or her family and friends. Safeguarding also becomes an issue when the child is outside our authority and it can also lead to much higher costs, depending on the type of placement available and the location. In many cases, the ideal solution, whether it be a short-term or long-term placement, is with a loving, supportive, stable and caring local foster home. In fact, in a recent local focus group of children in care, one child who had experienced different forms of care, such as a children's home and other institutions, mentioned that the time spent in foster care had been by far the best experience. So I am going to use this time to raise awareness and appeal to the press to get this very important message out there that we need more foster homes and to any potential foster families or foster carers, parents in and around Reading, to please come forward and speak with our teams at the Brighter Futures, not-for-profit, independent foster agency, if you feel you could offer a caring, stable and nurturing home for a child or children needing the same. I'm not going to say it would be an easy role and not without challenges, but it certainly can be a role that can be highly fulfilling and rewarding, knowing that you have provided a safe, secure and caring environment, helping a child or children to flourish and grow, building their confidence to help them achieve their potential and making a real positive impact on their lives, giving them the brighter future they deserve. For more information, visit the readingfostering.co.uk website, which is a great informative site providing all you need to know about fostering and importantly, how to get in contact and apply. Mr Mayor and fellow councillors, this time last year, the Rooted in Reading campaign was started by- the Rooted in Reading campaign was started by planting a cherry blossom tree outside the town hall to help us all remember and reflect on the children in care outside of our authority. On this anniversary, we can help by spreading the message that by increasing the number of possible local placements, we would not only be able to keep more of our children in care, safer and closer to their friends and families, but this would also have a great beneficial impact on the budget and help us to manage our costs more effectively and efficiently. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Robinson. And now an eagerly awaited contribution from councillor John Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try and be timely. I think it's really important that the councils are held to account of what's going on and what's being done and what's coming forward in this budget. So I think it is important that we all speak and the opposition as well. I think it's an important discussion and debate. And we're all reflecting on the difficulty that we are facing in this country with the pandemic and also as a national housing crisis for the last decade and the increase in homelessness. But like everyone else, I think it's important that I thank the officers, the housing team, the homelessness prevention, all the departments in housing for their hard work and commitment to ensuring as best as possible Reading residents have a decent place to live in tough times. The point about saving money, four hundred thousand pounds has been saved plus in the general fund with the appropriation of land, housing, general fund land into the housing revenue account. Without making any major cuts to any frontline services, four hundred thousand has been saved and the land will be used to build council housing for families and working in partnership with adult social care with vulnerable people. As far as homelessness is concerned, this council is taking a partnership approach, not the one-size-fits-all, we-know-best attitude, but a partnership approach. The budget has been protected on homelessness and in fact increased. And yes, we will acknowledge money coming from national government, albeit it'll be a situation when that money doesn't, when it runs out, it'll be a problem. But yes, it is good to acknowledge that. Because the everyone in, everyone being offered accommodation who's sleep, sleeping rough or at risk from homelessness has been an important part of the response to the pandemic. The figures are two hundred and sixty-four individuals have been placed in emergency accommodation throughout the pandemic. Everybody was offered accommodation. Nobody was left out unless they wanted to. To date, a hundred and thirty plus have been helped by the council to move into secure accommodation. Others have helped themselves and fair play to them. Fifty-two remain, fifty-two people remain in accommodation supported by the council short term. SWEAP is up and running when it's cold, so that's been supported. And plus forty modular homes are being proposed by the council to support people who are at risk of rough sleeping and homelessness. And there's a ten-bed women's project. As far as council housing is concerned, we thought a hundred percent affordable, build our own. A hundred and twenty-four homes have been planned, hundreds have been built. And they are the best and most efficient green houses that you can build. Almost award-winning passive house standards. The Green Party said that we have a blind side or a weak spot when it comes to green, efficient and energy. Just so that you know, as I always do, they oppose them, so they might have a blind side to green energy as well. These, these houses are planned and there's a whole number of council homes and planned improvements. Windows, central heating gas, which is in the pipeline being improved, sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight improved works to houses. I might slow down for Teve to get this down in this tweet because I can see he's tweeting. I can say about a forty-four million pound investment, talks about adult social care councillor Ballsden. Seventy-four new flats, sheltered flats, a significant investment. Working to support tenants who are vulnerable and involved with adult social care. That's a superb partnership that I want to see. In the private sector, we're supporting tenants, we're working with landlords, working with tenants avoiding eviction, which is a massive situation. A number of tenants worried about eviction. I nearly finished, Mr. Mayor, I do apologise. Now, you know, we're working with landlords to raise standards and supporting tenants against rogue landlords. Despite this pandemic, Mr. Mayor, and the national house in housing crisis, we are making an effort, we are having a go in building affordable housing, alleviating homelessness, supporting vulnerable families in adult social care, working with landlords and supporting tenants. That's why I want to support the budget. Thank you very much. And I can tweet for Teve if he wants to put that on the tweet afterwards. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Very much, councillor Ennis. Next is councillor Claire Grassall. Councillor Grassall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everyone else has said, I consider myself to be incredibly lucky and very grateful to be working with some of the most dedicated offices in the two portfolios that I cover. My first portfolio covers housing and I have to say my heart goes out to those people who have ended up in bed and breakfast as a result of the pandemic. The housing department have really worked tirelessly over the past few years to try and get everyone out of B and B, both for reasons of the huge financial burden, but also the mental health of the families who have ended up there. Because of some of the status, because of the status of some of the homeless people who now find themselves in B and B and who don't have recourse to public funds, RBC have been working with the Ministry for Housing to find a solution. And, and you know, it's always encouraging to hear about the collaboration between the council and the government. And I know that it's something that they do regularly. Zelda has done a lot of work with the government. In order to start making inroads into getting the people out of B and B, the council are going to build the forty temporary units, which councillor Ennis was just talking about. The fact that the Conservative government lifted the HRA borrowing cap means that we had a backup option for funding, but actually we didn't need it because we successfully bid for a grant from Housing England. I know that councillor Devine doesn't appreciate the element of competition in bidding for these grants. But actually, it's my understanding that Reading Borough Council are very successful in securing funding. And indeed, as councillor Ennis just mentioned, we also have a project for female ex-rough sleepers to help get them back on their feet. And I understand that we are looking into the possibility of becoming a strategic partner with Homes England, but I know that that, that might not be possible. With my education hat on, I just wanted to say what a different department we have now to when I first started working on this portfolio. And I have to really take my hat off to Dr. Reynolds, who is just showing such an incredible commitment to driving education forward in the borough and really fighting hard to ensure that the number of places available for send children increases over the coming months and years. We've known for ages that the number of children with send is increasing and it's, you know, we've really struggled to actually get anywhere with it. But it really feels as though we're now moving forward with this and ensuring that children can get access to the educational support that they need within the borough. You know, because it's been a bit of a slow process, it's resulted in many children having to go out of the area, which is costing the authority an absolute fortune and has meant that children are away from their communities and their natural friendship, friendship bases. Working with Wokingham Borough Council to get DFE approval for the Oak Tree Academy is going to provide at least seventy places for children in Reading. I know councillor Pearce mentioned a hundred and fifty places, but I was under the impression that that was split between the partner authorities. So we would get maybe seventy to seventy-five places there. And that is a big step forward. And I know it's not technically within the borough, but it's close enough to ensure that the council will save a substantial amount of money and, and hopefully provide a much more sustainable way of educating children with specialised needs. After, I know, and admittedly very difficult start to the term in January, the government has been committed to ensuring that disadvantaged children have access to necessary technology to support their home learning. Families have received additional data and online learning from institutions such as the Oak Academy have been zero-rated, so families won't be charged for accessing them. The Oak Academy has also received funding to increase its educational offering to all ages across the curriculum. And the government is supporting children who are eligible for free school meals and that included over the half-term. However, I just wanted to say that the real heroes in all this, for me, are the teaching staff and the head teachers. And I feel it's really important just to say on behalf of the Conservative group how much we applaud everyone for their level of commitment and dedication that they've shown to the children during this entire pandemic with all its uncertainties and under a just staggering amount of pressure. I know how much the children mean to their teachers, how concerned the teachers are about the children's welfare and how much they miss them when they're not in school. And we in the Conservative group would like to express our most sincere thanks to them for their really remarkable job. Not just the teaching staff, but all the support staff as well that they've done and will keep doing to ensure that children get the best possible education. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very much, councillor Grassall. Next up is councillor Rod Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak today. I will speak, I'll be speaking against the proposed increase in the council tax by the Reading Labour Administration. Whilst we agree the council needs to balance its budget, meet its fiscal deficit and build reserves, we disagree with the Reading Labour's group approach to put the burden on the back of the hard-working Reading residents. Instead, the council should generate income and find efficiencies. Mr. Mayor, under Reading Labour Administration, the council tax increased by more than twenty-six percent in last seven years for an average band seat property. The proposal of a further increase of five percent this year and again for next two years will hit the poorest Reading residents the hardest. The leader of the council mentioned financial prudence. But over the year, Mr. Mayor, the Labour Administration missed the opportunities to offset funding reductions by generating new income through a range of investment strategies that offer yields with fiscal sustainability, prudence and affordability. For some councils, Mr. Mayor, the return from the prudent investment generate up to thirty million of additional income every year, enough to cover each year's spending on adult social care or children or young, young people's services. To give you an example, Mr. Mayor, the current method to detect and repair portholes in Reading is labour-intensive, slow, unsafe and costly to the economy and to the environment. Investing in technology will help in assessing portholes in seconds rather than in weeks or months. Satellite imaging or fitting sensors under the waste trucks to inspect roads and portholes are already used by several councils today. The Blackpool Council has fixed five thousand one hundred and forty-five portholes with just under four hundred and fifty thousand pounds, which could have costed them one point five million using traditional methods and saved one million pounds of taxpayers' cash this year for their residents. Mr. Mayor, councillor Adele emphatically said the budget looks into the future. I'm afraid that is not the case. Reading is the third largest tech city in UK. And according to recent Gartner poll showed that eight, forty-eight percent of employees is likely to work post-COVID remotely. And Reading has significantly young and digital sector population profile than its, many of its neighbours. Many people choose to live or move to our town mainly for three reasons. Work opportunities, cost of running a house and social life. With now ability to work from anywhere, I fear a slow exodus of IT sector and young population out of Reading in the coming years due to high taxes and premium charges for deteriorating basic services. Therefore, it is paramount to ensure Reading Council to offer value for money for their residents. The dismal response of merely hundred and fourteen out of more than two hundred thousand Reading citizens to the council survey shows the lack of engagement Reading Labour Administration has with its residents. The inconvenient truth is, Mr. Mayor, an ideology of raising taxes should not dictate council priorities. You cannot secure economic success of Reading by saddling its residents with high taxes and premium charges or parceling out the blame to the central government and patting our own backs. You need to cut wastage and generate income via prudent investment. To conclude, Mr. Mayor, the Reading twenty fifty vision projects talks about establishing Reading as an internationally recognised and economically successful, successful city.
One minute.
I'm sorry to say, Mr. Mayor, this proposal is a step in a wrong direction for this expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Singh. In the final straight now, councillor Paul Carnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we sit here tonight debating this year's council tax, there will be people sitting around Reading worried about their household finances. Throughout the pandemic of the past year, as we know, the government has provided one of the most generous support packages to supporting businesses, individuals and, as we've heard, local authorities. But as the vaccine programme rolls out apace, we can, we can now see the end of the lockdown and indeed rightly so, the end of the financial support. Households may have been furloughed or jobs may have been lost. People may be looking at a pay freeze. And along comes another inflation-busting council tax rise, five percent this year. A band-dee property in Reading currently pays four hundred pound more a year in council tax than the average of other Berkshire authorities. And we can't address this in one budget, especially if we have to wait and see the impact of the pandemic on the economy. We can look at how we spend the council taxpayers' money. When you're in discussions with the unions, will it include asking them to pay rent for the, their office spaces that we currently provide? This may only be a small amount, but every little helps. Earlier, we were given just a hint of the cost of agency staff to the, to the council taxpayers. It's proposed to spend over nine million pounds over three years to improve the council's vehicle fleet to help meet the council's environmental targets. And that is a totally worthwhile goal, but if the timeframe were extended to five years, there will be an in-year saving of a million pounds. But there are savings to be made and therefore I will not be supporting this budget. Many thanks.
Thank you, councillor Carnell. Councillor Josh Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies, it's so late. I'll just say a few words. Following on from three of our friends in the Conservative Party, I think I want to reiterate that this council is under great pressure from government cuts and from the Covid pandemic and from our government's stop-start-hesitate approach over the last year. Plus, of course, it's under great pressure from the self-inflicted wounds of millions of pounds wasted failing to file its accounts, millions wasted on transport schemes that go nowhere, millions handed to lawyers to block equal pay claims from women. And whilst internal audit highlight the council's problems with transparency, this budget has been conducted with all the details of the cuts kept private instead of being published. And councillor Emerson seemed confused, but there can be no confusion if you publish them. The council's independent external auditors keep assessing Reading's councillors failing to provide value for money for its residents. And now we have a survey with many of Reading's residents agreeing. Putting up the cost of our residents' permit parking, which will pay for the Labour councillors' pay rise of last year, will feel especially galling to many, especially those on low incomes, Mr. Mayor, with the council not even offering a concessionary rate. And what a contrast it is to the last full council meeting you chaired, Mr. Mayor, when we heard councillors line up to tell us how fantastic our unions were, how much they supported them. And what do we find in this budget? That Labour councillors are prepared to cut the terms and conditions of our workforce right out from under them, even sack them if necessary, stop paying them overtime and shift work. A process that the Labour Party nationally has said should be illegal. Just officer words, said councillor Emerson, I think. But those words have been checked, validated and will be voted for by every Labour councillor. What's happened? These are some of the very key workers we applauded on our doorsteps. How the council can have the heart to do that after this year just gone is astonishing. How the council can have the heart to do that after this year just gone is astonishing. And the Green Group will be voting against this budget, Chair. At the heart of any Green Party budget would be people and the planet. Thank you to councillor White for moving his amendment. Tackling fuel poverty, cutting carbon, creating green jobs is a real vision for the future. It's a shame that Labour don't share that vision. The climate emergency should be at the core of everything we do. But what is there in this budget? An underfunded tree budget. Thank you to councillor Davine for attempting to amend that. And a sustainability team shrunk to an all-time low. Look closely, Mr Mayor, and there's nothing at all at the heart of this budget. Not people, not the environment, not, well, anything. And that's the problem. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Williams, councillor Terry Page.
Mr Mayor, can I just pick up on the issue of council tax rises? Councillor Skeets and her colleagues who have spoken this evening speak with forked tongue. The most conservative-controlled authorities are increasing the council tax by the full amount in the same way that we are, because they recognise that the government has made them an offer they cannot refuse. And the vast majority of Conservative councils are increasing their council tax by the same amount. And for councillor Skeets to say the country voted for the current government's programme, well, perhaps she might also like to reflect on what Boris Johnson said on the steps of Downing Street when he became Prime Minister. And I'm just going to read it to you very quickly. "I'm announcing now, we will fix the crisis in social care once and for all with a clear plan we have prepared." Well, where is it? And as councillor Jones rightly remarked in the chat and got rebuked for it, the fact is that he doesn't have one. Like most of his promises, it's completely spurious. There's no plan and for that he should be ashamed of. And Reading didn't vote for a Conservative government. Councillor Skeets, the vast majority of people in Reading voted against this government, both in Reading East and in Reading West. And if you take the combined votes, you have a substantial Labour majority. So our people locally are being defended by a Labour council as best we can. And we're proud of it, as you've heard from colleagues this evening. And for councillor Singh to go on about the inefficiency of the way in which we repair potholes just shows the lack of information and research and learning that he displays. We carry out pothole repairs in this authority at about 75% of the cost of a private sector contractor. Indeed, he was at a traffic management subcommittee, I think, where we had the figures and the presentation. And yet he chose not to raise any of the drivel that we've heard from him this evening. Reading's in-house, in-house, I emphasise, team is delivering pothole repairs considerably cheaper than any private sector contractor. Then we also have the nonsense about this budget not having climate change priorities at its heart. We've just heard it from councillor Williams, notwithstanding the list of schemes that are shown on pages 43 and 44 of our budget papers. And I'm pleased to be able to say on top of that, we've just been awarded £3.5 million for energy efficiency work in schools from the government's Public Sector Decarbonisation Fund. And that's a bid that we put in at Policy Committee, approved at Policy Committee report that I brought in January. And we've been awarded that funding. As councillor Brock, or I think it was councillor Roland or Brock said, it doesn't matter what figures we have in the budget for tree planting or any other climate initiatives, there will be somebody who comes along and says, it's not enough. Well, of course, it's not enough if infinity is what you're judging it by, but we live in the real world. We have to prepare a balanced budget. There have to be priorities. And still we are able to show that we have climate initiatives at the very heart of our budget. So, Mr Mayor, can I thank all colleagues who have contributed this evening and particularly also officers who have put a lot of time into producing a balanced budget at a time when local authorities of Conservative, Labour, Lib Dem persuasion have toppled financially and are now on life support from central government. It's no mean feat. I'm sure if you were able to say a bit more, Mr Mayor, you would recognise that as you have done in the past. So thank you to you, Chair, and to colleagues who have contributed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Page. Unfortunately, I feel inscrutably silent chairing the meeting this evening. So finally, you might recall councillor Brock, just over two hours ago, you proposed the motion about the budget. Could we ask you now, please, to sum up?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A very good evening for a scrutiny. Just a few highlights, I suppose, I wanted to focus in on. Firstly, let's clear it up. The nonsense from councillor Josh Williams. He knows, you know, Mr Mayor, we all know, we don't vote tonight to make policy of officer narratives on business cases. We vote tonight only to implement those things which are in the recommended actions covered in the composite motion. Any change to Ts and Cs would require future reports. Of course, we've discussed and debated them fully. No one is going to be sacked over terms and conditions. And it is because we support our unions that we will negotiate with them to ensure that the terms and conditions of employment that we have here at the council are the right ones, the appropriate ones, to take us forward and work to the benefit of all staff. And as councillor Emerson has said, as I said earlier, we will remain and we will enhance our status as the exemplar employer here in Reading. Another fantastic intervention I very much enjoyed was councillor Raj Singh, who, he said some things, I'm pretty sure he tried to sell me a pyramid scheme at one point and suggested, you know, perhaps we should do a bit more gambling or something with taxpayers' money. Now, of course, we make sensible investments, but this idea that we should be investing money in pursuit of financial returns recklessly or this idea that somehow we should be casting around to make further cuts, which is what he's asking for. I mean, we have, you know, over £25 million of savings in the medium-term financial strategy before you tonight. I think it's impossible to argue that this administration is not serious about delivering a balanced budget through all viable means. We are taking our duties very, very seriously indeed. Councillor Bulston said, how can we guarantee that the adult social care precept will be only spent in adult social care? Well, it's very simple. 3% doesn't even cover the service pressures. So it is impossible to not spend the entirety of that adult social care precept on adult social care. But of course, the budget, as with all things, will be submitted to proper scrutiny throughout, including through the Audit and Governance Committee that you chair, Mr Mayor. I should say, one thing I was remiss, actually, in my introductory remarks in saying, which is remarkable given how long they were, in not thanking councillor Skeets for some of the constructive dialogue that she has had with me throughout the pandemic. And I do think that she certainly has taken that responsibility that she feels to work in a constructive, cross-party way seriously, and I am grateful for that. Disappointed that she points to council tax rise as a reason that the Conservative group will be opposing the budget tonight, especially as she appeared to critique the use of reserves to finance the budget. We cannot have it, of course, both ways, to say that on the one hand, we shouldn't be using reserves. On the other hand, we shouldn't be raising taxes. If we didn't raise council tax, we would clearly have to make use of more reserves and we would not have a sustainable budget. We would not have a prudent budget. The other point, I suppose, taking collectively some of the comments from the Green Group and the Liberal Democrat Group tonight, I find, you know, slightly bizarre, really, honestly, you know. We have £7 million, £7 million in this budget for tackling climate change. We reject tonight two ill-considered, ill-fought-through amendments for a cumulative total of £270,000. And they say, they scream that we're not serious about climate change. Well, how are we not serious about climate change? £7 million. All of the policies that we have introduced over the past two years directed towards tackling climate change. We are serious and we value substance over virtue signalling. And that is what you get with a Labour council. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And once again, I suggest we move to the vote.
Thank you very much, councillor Brock. Much as I'd like to do it by acclamation at this time of the evening, unfortunately, we are obliged to do a recorded roll call. Each councillor voting individually. Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Yes, your face is just, I don't know why. So, okay, I'm relieved that I'm not alone again. So I will run through the entire council alphabetically. And if you're obviously going to anticipate when your name's coming up and be ready to vote for or against the motion. Starting with councillor David Absalom.
For.
Absalom.
For.
Councillor Ayub.
For.
Councillor Bulston.
Against.
Councillor Barnet Ward.
Oh.
Councillor Brock.
For.
Councillor Carnell. I think it was against. Councillor Challenger.
For.
Councillor Davies.
For.
Councillor Davine.
Against.
Councillor Eden. Councillor Eden.
Eden. She's just running down the stairs.
Oh, sorry, had a child.
Councillor Edwards.
Oh.
Councillor Emerson.
Oh.
Councillor Ennis.
Oh.
Councillor Gittings. Gittings.
Mr Mayor, he said in the chat he's having tech problems and wants to vote for.
For. Councillor Grasshoff.
Against.
Councillor, not hackers here, councillor Hoskin.
Or.
Councillor For. Councillor James.
For.
Councillor Jones.
Oh.
Councillor Khan.
For, if you can hear me, please.
I can hear you. For. Councillor Lang.
For.
Councillor Lovelock.
For.
Oh, good, we couldn't hear you earlier. Councillor Mascol.
For.
Councillor McEwen.
For.
Councillor McConnell.
Against.
Councillor McKenna, sorry.
For.
Councillor O'Connell.
Against. Did you miss councillor Manguini?
She's not here. Councillor McKenna, sorry, was for councillor O'Connor.
Sorry, I'm against. I just thought you might have missed one of the councillors as you went through.
She's not here. Councillor Page.
All.
Councillor Pearce.
For.
Councillor Robinson.
Against.
Councillor Roland.
For.
Councillor Rinn. Against. Councillor Diapai Singh.
For.
Councillor Raj Singh.
Against.
Councillor Skeets.
Against.
Project Sukakali.
For.
For. Councillor Stamford Beale.
Against.
Terry.
For.
Councillor White.
Against.
Councillor Whitam.
Against.
Josh Williams.
Against.
Oh.
Councillor Rose Williams.
For.
Councillor Woodward.
Two very well, Williams.
And so, officers, I think we can conclude that the motion is carried from that.
Yes, Mr Mayor, motion is carried.
The motion is carried. So thank you very much, councillors. And we saved for the finale, absolute showstopper, item 12 of the agenda, and that is the polling place in Whitley Ward. Councillor Brock, I think, is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll be as brief as possible, pretty straightforward report. I'm sure everybody's read it and can understand it. The key thing, I suppose, that we should note is adding in the delegation 2.2 to allow the returning officer in consultation with myself and with relevant ward councillors to vary a polling place outside of the usual period if required for COVID reasons. So obviously, the returning officer will be reviewing polling places across the borough to determine that they can be suitably COVID mitigated so that electors are able to turn up safely and cast their ballots. Of course, in the course of that, the returning officer may discover that some polling places don't fit that criteria especially well, and so may make a recommendation to change it. But that will be in consultation with the ward councillors and with myself. But I think it's right that I draw attention to that. But otherwise, very straightforward report. And I move as printed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
A second in reserve, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Page. I can't see anybody else indicating that they wish to speak on this item. Does anybody want to speak on it? Okay, I'll just hopefully move to the right. Thank you, councillor Wyatt. Helpful, yes. As we approach 10 o'clock. Right, I'm going to go for this. Councillors, sorry, do you want to sum up, councillor Brock?
No, I think that's okay, Mr Mayor.
Move to the vote and hopefully acclamation. All those in favour, please indicate now.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
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 Anybody?
Agreed.
Right, helpful. Okay, I think we can fairly assume that they are, or other, that the motion is carried. And so I think that gets us to the end of the evening. So thank you very much, councillors, for everybody's contribution. A full debate. We were somewhat apprehensive about how this was going to work. Virtually, we've managed it. I was thrown out at one point, but got back in thankfully. So we got there. So we have a budget and thank you very much. Everybody contributed. And thank you, officers, for your support for the evening. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, officers.
Thank you all.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Have a good night, all.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.